Call meeting to order of the Brownsville Independent School District's Board of Trustees, regular board meeting scheduled for today, October 3rd, 2006, at 5:30 at the Administration Building. Will everyone please rise for a moment of silence, pledge of allegiance, and Dr. Scobedo, you have a few kind words?
Yes, sir. I'd just like to remember Mr. Gustavo Jimenez, he served the district as a bus driver for over twenty years and passed away here recently. Our condolences to the Jimenez family.
Everyone is present for tonight's meeting. And we move on to item five, recommend approving the agenda of the regular board meeting of October 3rd, 2006, with any corrections, Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, under closed meeting, item A42 will not be addressed tonight. It's been pulled. A42.
Anything else?
That's all.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve tonight's meeting?
I move to approve.
Motion in a second to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor, signal a favor, raise your hand, say a aye. My motion carries. Move on to six, recommend approving the minutes of the regular board meeting of September 19th, 2006, and the minutes of the special call board meeting of September 26th, 2006, with any corrections. Mr. Manios?
Yes, I have one for the September 19th. And it's on, I have an addition that I would like to add to page 14. This is, this is at the end of item 31, at the top of page 14. I would like to add that I pointed out that the lack of unit rates and quantities in the bid backup data made it impossible for the board to properly evaluate the worthiness, assess, and value the contract recommended for approval by the administration. Mr. Gonzalez promised to provide this data in the future, in future contract presentations where the data is available and relevant to the discussion-making process, decision-making process, process.
You concur, Mr. Gonzalez?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, make those notations. Anything else?
That's all I had.
Okay, motion to approve those meeting, oh, those minutes?
Second.
Motion in second to approve minutes of September 19th and September 26th of this year. All those in favor, signal a favor, raise your hand, say aye. My motion carries. Move on to item seven, Superintendent's Report, A, Conference Presentation, One, Presentation on Foreclosures. Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lehman, members of the board. We have a presentation by our tax attorneys today, and Mr. Sanchez will introduce that presentation. Mr. Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. For members with us today is Rick Peña, with our attorney that is in charge of collecting our delinquent taxes. So I'd like to call on Mr. Rick Peña to come up to the podium, please.
Good evening, I'm Enrique Peña, I'm the local attorney for Leimberg Gog and your tax collection firm. Mr. Sanchez asked that I give you the board an overview of this past year's collection, delinquent tax collections and our overall collection process. I delivered a collection report, and this report outlines our, the goals achieved and the taxes tactics used by our, our firm. Just to give you an overview, when we, the taxes throughout the year we collect, we use mailings and door-to-door collections. This past year alone, we mailed out forty-seven thousand notices to delinquent taxpayers. We send notices to taxpayers if they owe from five dollars and up. So forty-seven thousand notices were sent this year throughout the year. We did six different mailings. All these calls are borne by our law firm, besides the mailouts are done through the tax office. In addition to the mailouts, we conducted close to twenty-five hundred knock-and, what we call knock-and-talks, those are home visits this summer, help seeking to reach our max tax goal, which we did. Those knock-and-talks, we were seeking to collect close to two and a half million dollars in taxes. And those knock-and-talks are trying to reach taxpayers that are, that we don't have in litigation, but we need, we want to encourage them to come to our office and pay. So that is the largest amount of knock-and-talks that our law firm has ever done. This is a special program that we have for BISD. As far as litigation, this past year, we filed a hundred and forty-six lawsuits seeking collect eight-hundred-eighty-seven thousand dollars. We took judgment on forty-seven of those suits. We're ready to take another judgment on another twenty-six, and we have pending petitions. These are lawsuits that we're seeking to get ready to judgment, or we have, are in contact with already, and having litigation, another hundred and fifty-seven, seeking to collect a million dollars. The collection comparison on our delinquent tax rate, we reached a collection rate of thirty-six point forty-five percent. That was three point nine million dollars. That is the highest collection rate that we've reached in the last ten years for the school district. And it is the highest collection rate, second highest collection, collection rate in all of Cameron County, and probably the third highest, I would say, in all of the valley, including Willacy, Hidalgo, Cameron, and Starr County. This, this year, we sold, we tried to sell twenty properties. We did sell eleven, we foreclosed on eleven properties, and we sold those, and we collected a hundred and twelve thousand. Nine of them, either we entered payment agreements, they were paid before sale, or there was no bids, and they were struck off to the school district. Starting this fiscal year, we've already, we're starting all over again, every fiscal year, we start with the new delinquent tax rule. We start the highest, the account that has the highest dollar amount owed, and we start collecting all of those. We do it every September. We've already targeted twenty-five real estate accounts for lawsuits this, this fiscal first quarter, excuse me. We will continue to actively dispose of the hundred and fifty-seven pending lawsuits. And this November, we already posted for sale ten real estate properties, seeking to collect close to seventy thousand dollars in taxes. There is a flow chart in, in my report outlining tax suit procedures. And I encourage you to look it over. If you have any questions, you can reach me in my office, phone number's on the first, the front page, and if you have any questions concerning the foreclosures or the suits, and how we handle the suits at that point, I'm glad to give you details more than this flow chart. That's all.
Comments? Mr. Manios?
Yes, may I address your attorney, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
No problem.
I have several questions I'd like to ask. Does, does the firm collect all delinquent taxes here in Cameron County?
We collect all except for the town of Rancho Viejo.
Okay. So, so I would, I would, I would say this was probably a procedural advantage for the firm, and that you're overseeing the, the whole picture for?
Yes.
My next question is, who determines, who takes the lead in foreclosures? What, what tax entity? Because I noticed that in the past, we've, we've had them come to us from the city and the county, and I'm wondering, they're, they're really the minor stakeholders in this, and why, why are we not taking the lead?
There's no, when we file a lawsuit, as in, let me explain how we do it. We have two attorneys, I'm in charge of Brownsville ISD and Point Isabel. And so I'm, when I look at, I'm looking at only BISD, and I file the lawsuits, and when I do file a lawsuit, I bring in anybody else owing taxes, as in Cameron County, the city of Brownsville, or any municipal, other, like the drainage districts and irrigation districts. So in actuality, Brownsville is in the lead. When it comes to, near the end, when we do the lawsuits, it's just, the, the style, we just put them in alphabetical order, so it really is, BISD is in the lead because they, they are owed always the most amount of taxes. So there's no, you know, per se, there's no.
Okay, well, like I say, the reason it caught my attention is I've, I've seen other, other entities come to us asking for waivers to, to be able to sell a property below assessed value, so I'm thinking that we didn't initiate.
Well, everyone needs to approve.
Yes.
When you go to tax sale, so everyone has to approve, so in actuality, if we're going to sell it, we go and ask them for the waivers, you know, and then we're getting approvals.
But they were coming to us, we weren't going to them, is what I'm saying. So they, they were in the lead. What, what, the point I'm getting at is, is that when, when, when we see, when we see properties sell for less than assessed value, that means they've been on the books too long, they've been off the tax rolls too long. And, and I'd like to, to point out to everybody, every dollar that we don't collect in taxes equates to four, five, and they're probably close to five dollars from the state of Texas, so every year that we don't collect that dollar, we're hurting our educational facilities. So when we see, when I see a property come to us, and we have to give a waiver to sell it because nobody wants to bid on it, it means that, that, that it's, the market out there says it's not worth the taxes even owed on it. That means that, that we have waited too long, that, that it's gotten away from us. We've lost money, we're never going to recover those monies. So my question is, what, what criteria are we utilizing to, 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 to bring these to the fore and make sure that we keep these properties on the tax rolls? If, if whoever possesses them now doesn't want to pay taxes on them, well, let's get them in someone else's hands, and they'll pay taxes on them. But, you know, when I see millions of dollars worth of properties, and obviously some of them that are never, ever going to be collected because they're owed for ten, fifteen, twenty years, that, that's, that's, that's a tremendous amount of money that we've missed, had, had some of those properties been sold on the steps of the courthouse. Years ago, we'd have had our money, and someone would be paying taxes on them today. Answer?
Well, as far as when we code the litigation, we're limited, as in, like I explained, every year, we start with the top dollar. And we, the only factors that come in to play, as in, if we're not catching them, is the first, we go by dollar amount, so we're, you know, we're hitting all the top dollars because we have to collect so much money for the school district. Statute limitations, because some of these properties don't generate enough taxes, if we bring suit, you know, we haven't been paid in two years, but we haven't brought them a suit, it's because they're not generating enough taxes to fall into the top category, they're like the top quarter. So we'll catch, we have to catch those when, if the statute limitations comes, comes into play. Or we were evaluating the role, and there wasn't any response, like these home visits, and you know what, they're not responding, they're not responding, so, you know, and we know there's someone there viable, then we'll bring the suit. There is at times, there is properties that do accumulate years, a lot of years, and it just comes down to, and we can only bring so many lawsuits in a year, the court system doesn't let us swamp them with thousand lawsuits. I, I can only bring around from a hundred and fifty to two hundred lawsuits a year. And so we have to limit and pick and choose those top dollar ones to put into lawsuits because if we bring into litigation, it's not going to generate the monies, you know, meet the goals of the school district. So, and that, and that's how it comes down to, we just have to go from top to the bottom, and hopefully we catch them all. We don't catch them all sometimes, but, you know, we do, our bottom line is to meet the goals, you know, get, make sure we get their full.
So, so you're, you're, you're limited by what the courts will allow?
Right. You know, when I bring a lawsuit in, I have ninety days to, to take it to judgment. That's not typical of any other lawsuit, you know, there are lawsuits in there for years. But when the court sees delinquent tax suits, they give us ninety days. You know, do it, or get it done, or get it out, and that's really limiting.
Does anyone here, here at BISD review the delinquent accounts? Is that, is that discussed with any of our people? Anybody here making these decisions or working with you guys?
We, I, I'll talk to Mr. Sanchez when there's a high dollar one, and like, there's, looks like there's problems, and if he sees some that he goes, what's, what's happening here, he'll contact our office. But to say that we go down and visit every accountant, no, we just don't do that. I don't do that with any energy, really.
The thing, that, I've thought of this before, and it slipped my mind, and I've, I've wanted to, to bring this out, and, and what, what brought it to the fore this time is, is I became aware of a, of a property that, that's quite delinquent, and now I understand that, that it's, that a deal has been made to settle for the, the owed taxes. But the, the taxes owed to us is something on the order of a hundred and fifty thousand, and, and so probably that much to the other entities, and, and the story was, was that we were going to settle for something on the order of fifty thousand dollars. And, and that tells me that, that this is way, way, way too late. And, and that, and that was kind of confirmation about my fears, that, that these properties aren't being addressed soon enough, that, that we end up having to do settlements, or, or they sell for way less than their assessed value. And like I say, every, every dollar that, that we don't have in our hands is, is five dollars compounded big time. So what, what I would like from, from, from your firm would be a, a listing, a computerized listing, if, if we will, probably by property description, this is a delinquent listing, by property, property description, the value, the amount delinquent, and the status. I'm sure you've got some sort of status code. Some of these are probably tied up in estates and things like that, and you just go through those.
Yes, we can generate one for the, for you, for you, so you can review and see.
Right. I think that, I think the administration should, should have this on a regular basis, but I'd like to see what it looked like.
That's no problem.
And probably my colleagues would, too.
There's no problem with that.
Thank you very much.
Additional comments?
I just have one follow-up that might be indirectly related. Mr. Peña, I think I had asked in the past that the web, that the law firm make access payments capabilities, and I don't know if, if your company or your, your firm is, is looking in, into that, where clients and taxpayers, basically delinquent taxpayers, can also go online and make payment?
I, I think the tax office is in the process of the, doing that. I, I mean, I know we have the capabilities, and I, I need, I'll double check on that and tell you what the status is.
We'd like to have that option, to probably increase the collections to a degree, or to a percentile. And Mr. Gonzalez, I'd like to see the front page of our website have a link, I still haven't seen it. They should go to pay your taxes or see your taxes.
That would be good.
I've asked that request.
Sure. Ms. Brown, can you take care of that?
Last one was, I think, with.
It goes into the suspense file.
Okay. Additional comments? Thank you, Mr. Peña.
Thank you.
Number, item two, notification of betterment fund, change orders and contract change orders. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yeah. We presented a change order, it's basically a change order back, receiving back our monies that was in the betterment fund. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Any comments?
Thirteen thousand back.
Okay. Okay, move on to item three, presentation on investments of the bond proceeds. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, members of the board. As you well know, we're going to be receiving the one-hundred-and-thirty-five million here in the next couple of days, and we'd like to give you information on how we're going to be investing those monies. And our financial advisor is here, he's ready to present, he's from Estaila Jose, and that's Mr. Larry Jordan. Mr. Jordan?
Thank you. As Superintendent said, we're coming down the home stretch, we're about to receive the funds, we're just now dotting the i's and crossing the t's. One, one item that has come up, you might hear about, the Internal Revenue Service has really tight restrictions on the issuance of, of tax-exempt municipal bonds, which these are. And they don't like the idea that somebody could borrow the money at these really low rates and then invest them for a really long time. So there's a provision, and this is really for all bond issues that are tax exempt, that we either expect we'll spend the money in three years, or we provide a certificate that explains that it's probably going to be four or five. And in this case, I think we're concluding that since we are where we are, and we have so many buildings to build, and that they're relatively large buildings, that it probably is going to take a little more than a three years. So with, in the next few days, we'll be collecting a certificate to file with the papers that just indicates it's probably going to be a four- or five-year spend. And that's, that's not unusual. The item we're talking about tonight is, is called a flexible repurchase agreement. We're going to show you all your different options, but this is really a way to invest the funds, where you maximize the return, and you also minimize the risk to the district. We have had some of this conversation before, but I think the staff thought we wanted to bring it by you just one more time, so everyone was clear on what we were suggesting. On page two, and I'll go through this pretty quickly, on page two, you can see a history of interest rates, where the green line, which is the line on the top, which has been around five percent, down to four and a half here since about the year 2000, that's where you borrow. You borrow at a long-term rate, because your bonds, you're borrowing for a long period of time. And then you turn around and invest the money short-term, and you can see there the red line and the blue line, which dipped down as low as one percent very recently, are now back up around five percent. And you can see, since about 2004, the Federal Reserve, they just keep increasing those short-term rates. And as an, as an investor, that's helping you. Now, in the old days, I would not have stood in front of you in 2002 or 2003 and said, we have a great situation, you can borrow at five, and you can lock in at three. I think you would have said to me, well, why is, why is that a good thing? If rates go back up, we could have gotten five. But in this case, you have a situation where the short-term rates now are around five percent, your borrowing cost is around four point one-five, which is a very low rate, and so we're able to lock in at or near or above the borrowing cost. Now, you remember at the beginning of the presentation, I mentioned the Internal Revenue Service, and they don't like the idea of you, again, investing money for a long period of time. They also don't like the idea of you investing at four, and, I'm sorry, borrowing at four and investing at five. And so there's a provision called the arbitrage rebate provisions, which basically says, if you invest above the yield on the bonds, which in your case is four point one-five percent, you have to send the money back to the federal government. And that's something that, again, applies to all issuers of debt, has applied to all your past issuers, it's not anything unusual. But the long and the short of that means that if you make an investment, and, and rates go up, and you're able to earn ten, twelve, fifteen percent, you have to send it to the IRS. There's really not an opportunity to be a hero. On the other hand, if you, if you invest short, today at five percent, and it drops down to four, three, two, one percent like it was just a few years ago, well, then there is an opportunity to be a goat. So what we're bringing to you today is called a flexible repurchase agreement that basically helps you be a hero. Your alternatives on page three, you can invest in U.S. government securities, you can say, well, I'll need some of the money in six months, some in a year, some in eighteen months, some in two years. The risk there is that you guessed a little bit, you know, your guess was not perfect, and maybe you need the money a little bit too soon, or maybe you need the money a little bit later. And so even though it appears that you can earn high rates, you know, you're locking yourself into a, a schedule. You can put the money in collateralized certificates of deposit in the bank, you know, somewhat the same issue, that, that if it's short, you're subject to rates going down, if you invest long, well, you may need the money sooner than that. And then finally, local government investment pools, you can just invest it really short, but you're really taking the risk there that if rates go down, well, your, your investing's going to go right down with them. Now, we've shown you on the next page, and, and one of the reasons to show you this schedule is just because I know you're very aware that when you borrow a hundred and thirty-five million dollars, and you invest it for any period of time, there's going to be interest earnings, and you can use that for additional projects. But we want to give you sort of an idea of what that means. Now, if you'd focus on that second bar, which is four point one-five percent, that's your arbitrage yield. And again, anything to the right of that, you can earn it, but you have to send it back to the IRS. And that's not a bad thing. I mean, we think that we're all federal taxpayers as well, we want to do the right thing for the federal government, and they want us to. But, but anything you earn above four point one-five percent, you send back. You can see here, if we, if we spend about like we think we're going to spend, there's about thirteen, thirteen million, three-hundred-ninety-one thousand of earnings. You could earn in the flex repo, that's what we're talking about, just to the right, four point seven-five percent. But again, you only keep the thirteen-three-ninety-one, you send the rest to the federal government. Right now, you do have the ability to buy securities or to invest in a pool at higher rates. But again, you have those risks of, of being able to time the investments or, or seeing the interest rates fall. And we've shown you all the way to the left, what happens if interest rates fall even to four percent. That's about four hundred thousand dollars of earnings that you would not receive. Now, on the next page, we show you what happens if you spend quicker. And part of the reason to show you this is to say, if you do turn into a quick spender, then you won't have thirteen million dollars. What's, what the flex repo protects is the investment rate, but not the actual dollars that you invest at. So in the, in the four point one-five percent, that's, again, your yield, you keep six point six million. Under the flex repo, you would earn about seven point six. Of course, you'd keep six point six of it, send a million back. And if you were in a pool all the way to the left, and rates fell to four percent, well, then it'd be about two hundred thousand less than what you're able to keep. So we're trying to make the point graphically here, that you do have some options. Anything above four point one-five percent, you're really not able to keep. Anything below really does come out of your pocket, and it's affected, your, your return is affected by what you invest in, and what we're trying to do here, again, is to maximize the return, minimize the risk. In the case of a flexible repurchase agreement, what you do is you, you tell the providers, well, this is when I think I would spend the money, and you provide a drawdown schedule, and they bid it, we would take competitive bids, and large banks, securities firms, insurance companies would say, well, with this drawdown schedule, I'll give you a rate of whatever, four point seven-five, four point eight, four point six-five. We would typically work with the one that would provide us the highest rate. If you ended up spending the money quicker, or spending the money slower, it's not a problem, you're still going to get that same rate that they promised you. If interest rates in the market go down, it's not a problem, you're still going to get that same rate they promised you. If interest rates go up, you're still going to get that same rate, but you wouldn't have kept the difference anyway. There's a bunch of pages here explaining the mechanics of the repurchase agreement, the fact that it is eligible under the Public Funds Investment Act, it is eligible under your investment policy. It is something that we would help you with, and on page 11, you can see some of the names there that you might recognize, Travelers, MBIA, Citigroup, Merrill Lynch, Bank of America, those are the types of people that, that would provide this kind of product. So we, we, if, our plan right now is to, is to go ahead and, and accept, accept the money on the fifth, to invest it just for a very short period of time in, in a pool or in some CDs, until we can get the flex repo documentation put together. Within the next few weeks, we would generate a draw schedule, we would circulate that to bidders, we would take competitive bids, and we would presumably award it to the one that had the highest rate. And that would ensure that you would receive that rate, which we expect today would be above the borrowing yield. I know I've covered a lot of ground, I'm glad to answer any questions. And this is, I think, more of a, of a briefing than anything, just so that you're aware of, of where we're going next.
Any comments, Mr. Powers?
President Lehman, thank you. Larry, on the first hundred million dollars that we did in 97, what was our investment vehicle? What did we put in, government securities, or was it?
Um, I really don't recall. Mr. Sanchez, was that in a pool or in government securities?
I don't, I don't recall.
Yeah. So you highly recommend the flexible?
Yes, and again, I wouldn't have recommended it a few years ago because the yields weren't there, but today they are.
That's because we're going to try to liquidate the money quicker than before?
Well, it's really because we're not, we're not certain of how quick we're going to liquidate the money. If you told me, sir, I'm going to need ten million in six months, and fifty million in twelve months, and thirty million in eighteen months, I think I'd have a different recommendation. But you're building a bunch of different schools all at the same time, you know, you're buying land, you're doing design, I just don't know that you have that kind of certainty.
The reason why I ask that, because on the hundred million dollar bond, that's basically what we did, too. So, and then, like I said, I'm, now I'm seeing flexible repurchase agreements, so that's what you're recommending, because we're going to a third party on the, on the, as a custodian to this, right?
That's right, that's right. Now, the, the bond-
So, if that's what you're recommending, because we're going to a third party on the, as a custodian to this, right?
That's right. That's right. Now, the bond issue, did you say that, were you asking about the 2002? Which bond issue were you asking about?
The 100 million, the first 100 million we did back in 97 through?
98.
98.
Okay. Yeah. I feel certain that if we could have gotten the flex rate above the borrowing rate, we would have recommended that to you.
Mr. Gonzalez?
If I may add, Mr. Layman, members of the board, back in 1997, when we passed the bond issue, we did not sell all the bonds at one time. We took it in stages. We sold 25 million. Then, when we spent those 25 million, we went and sold the other 25 million. So, it was a little bit different than what we're doing now. This was, remember, at that time, it was non-IFA money. It was strictly money from, the local taxpayer was going to pay it back without any assistance from the state. This one is a different, we're selling all together, and we're trying to do this project within three to four years as required by IRS to be able to do that. So, it presented a different type of scenario than what they're presenting tonight. So, I might say that we didn't sell all of them at one time at that particular time. This is why it was done a little bit different.
Yeah, it's coming back to me now. I don't believe we were involved in the 97. We were involved just after that. In 1997, I think that-
That was first financially-
First Southwest. And in order to avoid a tax increase, they actually invested, coincidentally, in a Flex Repo. And the Flex Repo was there to make the bond payments so that the taxpayer wouldn't have to. So, it is something the district has used before. But again, I'm agreeing with you. The situation was very different.
Very different. Mr. Sanchez, you got a comment?
Yes, board members and for the audience and some of the viewers out there, basically, what we're saying, and the administration supports the recommendation on the Flex Repo. The, what we're looking at, here's a percentage, 4.15%. That's the most, that's the most money we can earn and keep. The Flex Repo is going to be at 4.75, which is just above that. But it's a guaranteed percent that we would be getting a return. So, assuming rates would go down below 4%, we would still hold at 4.75. We can only keep up to 4%, 4.15. And so, we're actually hedging on the interest rates going down and maximizing our profits. So, it's really kind of, not the extreme on either end. So, we're kind of leveling our investment portfolio. And I think this would be a really good tool to use on this large amount of dollars.
The only reason I question it, because, like I said, the first time I heard about a flexible repurchase agreement is that in here, they're going to secure with U.S. government securities. But on the alternative investments, you can go straight to it, which would be a higher yield, correct. But by going through a custodian, we're able to get a bump higher and not lose any interest. Basically what you're saying. All right.
Additional comments?
So, if I understand this correctly, I'll reiterate, the purpose of this is to make sure that we don't drop below the 4.15. We're protecting ourself with inflation. So, we're shooting for 4.15. And I can see where a lot of people are going to want to get their hands on this money. There's a lot of money to be made here. Not us. We can't make anything. But we can be very conservative, and someone's going to make a, probably make a ton of money here. And the state isn't going to make anything off, or the federal government is going to make anything off. It'll state too. I guess the state's involved in this also, aren't they?
It's federal.
Right. Well, but it's IFA money.
Just to clarify, when we talk about making a lot of money, the, what the IRS does not want to happen, the IRS does not want the local banker to be in the back row saying, "Oh, they only keep 4.15. Why don't I give them a 4.16?" And then, everything between 4.16 and, you know, 5 and 3/4 or whatever it's supposed to be goes to the back row. So, that's why there is a requirement that we have a competitive process, and we'll take the best workable bid.
And that's what entered my mind. But, you know, we are going to, our intention is to hire a management contractor. I can do a cash flow right now. I'm capable of doing, probably Mr. Powers could do a cash flow also. We already envision that we want to perform this project within four years, finish by the end of 10, summer of 10 or the end of 2010. So, we just have to, we're going to probably have a special meeting and come to agreement on just exactly what projects we're going to incorporate in this. And then, we need to be prepared for whoever this contractor is that we bring on board to help us manage this project. But certainly, one of the things they'll do is they'll be able to give us a cash flow predicated upon the schedules that we agreed to. So, I think that, and plus with our fund balance, we have the capability of, we're not so tight that we have to, we have to make sure, we have to be that conservative in our, whatever program we choose. If we come up short here, we can find the bucks.
We won't come short.
We're not going to come. Well, at 4.75, I'm sure we're not.
Additional comments?
Mr. Jordan, I just had one question. The effective rate was a little higher. Why are we using 4.15? What would be the reason? I understood we had a higher-
Right. The net interest cost was 4.586, and the true interest cost was 4.439. They're all computed slightly differently. The Internal Revenue Service, of course, includes different things and different assumptions, and their rate is generally a little bit, the rate that we're supposed to use for the arbitrage rebate is just normally a little bit lower than some of the other rates that you saw.
Is that number going to change, or is that going to be a fixed number?
Oh, that's the fixed number. Now, if you ever-
Who determined that number?
Well, it's just a function of the borrowing cost. It's a formula, yes.
Just remember, something different. Additional comments? Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
Okay, thanks.
Move on to item four, a presentation on the Texas Education Agency's Governor's Texas Educator Excellence Award Grant Campus Plan. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Layman, members of the board. You're well aware, we're going out for more grants for the Educator Excellence Award that's being presented. It's called now the Texas Governor's Excellence. It used to be called the Governor's Excellence. We had other schools receive this. This is a new application. And we have Ms. Peña that has been working with Ms. Renfro on this, and they've reviewed some plans, and all the principals are in the back row that are here to be able to address any questions you might have. But there's going to be a presentation made, and Ms. Peña, would you introduce the presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Ms. Layman, members of the board. This Ronnie Renfro has been working with the 23 campuses who qualified to submit to TEA the Governor's Educator Excellence Award. Collectively, these campuses are eligible to receive up to three, oh, a little over $3 million under this program. As we present these plans to you tonight, these are draft proposals. The first step after tonight is that we submit it to TEA. The second is to negotiate with TEA on the possible proposals. Hopefully, they will accept all proposals as is. The incentive plans can change through this negotiation phase. With you tonight and to answer any of your questions is Ms. Ronnie Renfro.
Good evening. Board President, Mr. Layman, Interim Superintendent, Mr. Gonzalez, Honorable Board Members and Audience Members here tonight. My name is Ronnie Louise Renfro, and I am BISD's Grants Department Administrator. I'd like to take the opportunity at this time to congratulate our 23 campuses who are eligible to apply for this over $3 million in the Governor's Educator Excellence Award Program, Texas Educator Excellence Award Grant. And I'd like to ask our campuses to stand. The campuses that have qualified are Aiken Elementary, Benavides Elementary, Burns Elementary, Castañeda Elementary, Del Castillo Elementary, Egley Elementary, Gallegos Elementary, Garden Park Elementary, Gonzalez Elementary, Morningside Elementary, Ortiz Elementary, Palm Grove Elementary, Paredes Elementary, Pettis Elementary, Risaca Elementary, Sharp Elementary, Southmost Elementary, Villanueva Elementary, Ituria Elementary, Vesterro Middle School, Hannah High School, Lopez High School, and Porter High School. And I think they all need to have themselves and their faculties get a big round of applause for the hard work on getting these grants. I'd like to just briefly give you a little background, and I know that some of this has been included in the board members' background information for the agenda item number 13 tonight. But I know that not all the audience has had the chance to review this information. TEA's purpose for the Governor's Educator Excellence Award Program, Texas Educator Excellence Grant, is to provide a system of financial incentives to award educators who demonstrate the ability to achieve higher levels of student academic performance. And these grants have been awarded based on the percentage of educationally disadvantaged students and the high levels of achievement or growth in student achievement. And TEA truly wanted these to be incentive plans. They wanted to find out from teachers what they would do and for how much money they would do it. Eligible campuses were selected along the following criteria. Ranking within the top one-half of campuses with the highest percentage of educationally disadvantaged students ranked exemplary or recognized or having made significant top quartile performance in respect to their reading and math scores. So, originally, this group of campuses had 11 campuses that were recognized, and already this year, we now have all but six of these 23 as recognized campuses. The requirements of this grant required that the teachers, the faculty, actually develop these plans. They had to have them approved by either a simple majority faculty vote or by a vote of their campus grant committee that was representative of their faculty. TEA has recommended incentives should not be less than $3,000 nor more than $10,000 per teacher. However, only seven of our campuses have gone up to that $3,000 minimum. In fact, I think you can see that our campuses truly believe that we do more for less and truly believe in the village philosophy for addressing our student needs. They had to divide their monies into 75%, which would go to their teachers based on their qualifying at success in improving student performance and collaborating with their faculty and staff. 25% of these funds maximum could be used to provide additional incentives and professional development activities. All of our campuses have selected to do incentives with 100% of their funds, although they do have a couple of contingency plans that will fall into professional development. If not, all members are eligible to receive their funds. These, as a condition of the receiving these funds, the school district and the campuses must publish these plans for public viewing as well as present them to our District Education Improvement Council, which happened on September the 25th, and present them to the school board, which is basically what we're doing here this evening. I have to also congratulate BISD because we have the eighth-most campuses eligible for this grant in the state, as well as being the top in Region 1 for this $3 million and $30,000 opportunity. At this point, I will be glad to answer any questions the board may have to the best of my ability. Plus, we have our campuses here for-
Mr. Munoz, you had a comment?
Yes, I didn't, I couldn't find, see attached copies of campus incentive plan descriptions. I couldn't find them either on 4 or 13.
It's a booklet.
Oh, it's the book. Okay, okay, the book. We got it.
No questions.
Never mind.
No further questions.
Anything else?
Yes, I did have a couple of, was there input from the superintendent and the AAs on putting these plans together?
To answer your question, Mr. Munoz, Mr. Layman, if I may, members of the board, input, no. Review, yes. They were actually sent up to my office for review. I don't know of the AAs, how closely they worked with them, but I think most of them worked with their principals on it and reviewed the plans. It was more of a review process. And Ms. Renfro, I asked her to work closely with me and said, "Ronnie, if there's anything out there that I really need to look at, please jump up and tell me about it." And Ms. Peña also reviewed them with me. So, we reviewed them. We're comfortable with them. They're pretty well within tolerance of what we expected. So, that's okay. And I thank the hard work of all the principals that put them together. They really did an outstanding job. And thank you, Ms. Renfro, for working it together. So, I did have a potential review on those questions.
One other question. I'm glad that there was some oversight. It sounds like, and I'm making an assumption, but I'll ask, these plans are going to differ from the '05-'06 plans?
To a certain extent. Ms. Renfro, you want to say what exactly why they're differing, please?
There's a couple of key differences. One, these plans are actually only one year of incentive proposal, whereas the Governor's Awards are for three years. There are some differences given to the campuses and the parameters, although both had the $3,000 to $10,000 recommended range from TEA. After what our campuses talked about from the Governor's Group to this group, most of them, again, went back to the village philosophy and would rather do more for less.
And just in general, who, whatever campuses are successful in winning these awards, using the formula for distribution, that will, the people that receive these monies will be the people that earned them, that were there at that point in time regardless of where they're at?
No, sir. This is an incentive plan, and as well as for the Governor's round next year, these campuses, the teachers, either by individual or team, depending on their plan, will have to meet their eligibility criteria, or they get, they may get nothing. And then, the balance of the funds will be distributed among the remaining eligible staff.
What I meant was if a certain school or a certain teacher won an award, and they left that school, by the time the money comes out, is it going to catch up to them wherever they're at?
It depended on the actual campus. Some campuses are going to be making their funds, their staff eligible if they leave the campus. Others have put guidelines in place so that they will, because of the retention option, that they would need to be on their campus. But that was determined individually on these plans.
Everybody knows. Okay, thank you.
That's why we'll publish the plans.
Additional comments? Mr. Powers?
Thank you, President Layman. Mr. Gonzalez, the only question I have is, have we received the money and when it would be distributed?
Once they apply for it, hopefully all of them will get it. And once it comes in, then they will be distributed in accordance with the guidelines of TA. And Mr. Sanchez will be sure and get a no-go on that once that's received.
So, that like roughly depends-
Ronnie, the general timeline for the distribution is for most of them, we're looking at August, September of 2007.
Question is, this is guaranteed, or they got to work for it?
They have to work for it.
Answer Mr. Powers's question. You're already spending the money they don't have, Mr. Powers. Okay, well, any additional comments? Okay, want to wish all the participating campuses good luck. Thank you. We want to be standing in Board Agenda Items 5, Board Calendars, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. Layman, members of the board. Page 29, you have the October calendar, and just want to point out a couple of things that are out there. Of course, tonight, we have middle school open house. I'm sure that some of the middle school principals are going to be going right now to that. Thursday, we have high school open house. Remember, on next Monday, we do not have classes, however, it is a teacher workday. It's a campus day, staff development waiver day. And on the 12th, be sure in circle the 12. It's important. I hope that every board member is able to go visit to Putinet. The Commissioner of Education will be there, and that's just for the public to also know that the Commissioner of Education will be coming to Brownsville. They will be at Putinet Elementary. There might be other dignitaries coming with her. It's an important announcement that she has planned to make here in Brownsville concerning Putinet Elementary. We also have next week National School Lunch Week, Fire Prevention Week. On the 21st is the Buddy Fund Meet in Sam Stadium at 7:30 in the morning. Please put that on your calendar. And in the evening, if you had enough fun in the morning, then go in the evening to UIL Pickskin at West Lico. And I'll be there, and I hope some board members will be there also. Don't forget, at the end of this month, we'll be changing back to regular time, no more daylight savings time. And then, in November, November 2nd is Kids Voting. And of course, on the 7th is the General Election, Selection Day. Those are just a few things for you to put on your calendar.
Additional comments from any board member? Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Move on to item 8, Public Audience. The next item on our agenda is the public comment period. This is the time for citizens, staff, or students to provide their comments to the board. Statements and questions from the audience will not be permitted during any other portion of the meeting, so please let us hear from you now if you have any comments. of the meeting, so please let us hear from you now if you have any comments to present. To have your comments heard tonight, your name and the subject matter of your comments must appear on the sign-in sheet, which is located in the rear of the meeting room. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes to complete his or her comments. With all due courtesy, I will strictly enforce that time limit. If a group of people want to be heard on the same topic, the board asks that they designate a spokesperson to avoid needless repetition. The board has adopted rules to preclude the abuse of open forum by, for example, anyone uselessly repeating the same comment or complaint meeting after meeting. All participants must understand that if your comment, in my judgment, constitutes a complaint against an employee or an officer, I will interrupt and ask you to stop and direct you to proceed with the BISD's formal grievances procedures be found that in DGBA, FNG, or GF Local of our local policies. With those cautions in mind, we will now hear the general comments from the public. First person is the Goberto Barrera, new superintendent, need not search firm.
I don't know, Mr. Gonzalez, Superintendent, Honorable Board Members, and my fellow Americans. As a past educator and counselor for 38 years, and four years in the U.S. Department of Education in Washington, and a conservative, I am concerned with the number of superintendents we have had since I was a counselor here. First was Mr. Wally Jackson, then came the Wulvestero, then Jack Ammons, and then Dr. Sendejas, Salceda, and then we had two temporary interns. And the lady Solkowski is gone too. My concern is that I hope you board members have learned a lesson on selecting a superintendent. First, slow down on giving big salaries and big perks. It cost us taxpayers a lot of money to hire a so-called "search firm" to seek a capable superintendent. Don't hire Senator Luzio because he is also a consultant on everything. I'm glad that you all have hinted that you will look within our school system. The Herald editorial, Ms. Benavides, on Sunday, was not very satisfied with that approach. But it's not her money, but I am satisfied with that approach. I think you all have had some good talent in our school systems. Seven assistant superintendents have to help the superintendent. If those people do their job right, it would... Let me see where I am. I think you all have talent within your own system. If the superintendents, that you have seven of them, the new superintendent will be a guide, a leader, and a manager of data. Mr. Johnny Pineda took the helm for a while. He did a pretty good job. Don't get a superintendent that plays a musical instrument, please. My other concern was the closure of Central Junior High, Old Brownsville High, and the Old Clearwater Elementary School. I thought in some of those schools, the buildings were solidly built. The reason given for the non-use of those buildings was that they had mold. It would hurt the students and the staff. Now they have been cleaned up, but now more administrators will occupy those buildings instead of classrooms. The bond issue, claim that we needed classrooms, more so than anything else, and we, some of us, didn't oppose that bond issue because of that. Soon we'll have more administrators using educational buildings than we have students. On the superintendent, start him out, him or her, with a slightly reasonable salary. Remember that this area is a low-wage area. It's not an upscale area. There were 20,000 complaints of higher taxes with the appraisal district. My taxes were lower because I complained loudly. How can anyone say that our last superintendent was excellent or super when 50 percent of our students drop out? When 20 schools failed to meet AYP, Adequate Yearly Progress Performance in Reading, English, and Math for III from the 3rd to the 8th and 10th grade? Last year, nine were low. Now we've got 20 schools that are low. Be careful with our tax money, people. It's not yours to waste or to squander. Remember what happened at our water port. $21.3 million gone to the invisible bridge of nowhere. Thank you. Thank you. I'm not here only to chastise you, but sometimes I want to praise you. Thank you for capping your taxes on some of those fogies that are 65 and over and disabled. Don't raise our taxes anymore. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barrera. Next person is Fernando Ruiz, School Business.
Good afternoon, members of the board, faculty, students, superintendents, assistant superintendents, and the public. My name is Fernando Ruiz. I was listening to this gentleman in reference to the bond issue about the federal government and about the school district, and about the monies going here and going there, but I never heard anybody speak for the taxpayer, we that have to pay all these monies. We need some kind of representation also. And I'm going to request from this board and from the superintendent that whenever you start your business concerning these monies of the bond, that I'm going to address this... We need to form a committee of persons from the Chamber of Commerce so that we can be in parallel and hand in hand as to how these monies are going to be spent and how they're going to be paid. Number two, when you all first started issuing those bonds or whatever, you told the public that the state was going to pay for some of this money. Of this $135 million, I have not heard one word of what the state is going to pay. And all of you who are educators should come up and say, you are going to have to pay part of this money, and maybe your grandchildren. Because I have been observing the enormous amount of monies that are issued to special districts in the state of Texas and throughout the United States. They're in the trillions of dollars. And who is going to have to pay this money? The taxpayer. I know you cannot answer my question, but I need to know, of those $135 million, do you have a projection? Because when you go to the SBA to borrow money, you have to have a projection of how much you're going to ask for and how much you're going to borrow so that they can know what you're going to spend it. This is putting... You're putting the carriage in front of the horse. I have been researching concerning the bond theory here in the state of Texas. If you're supposed to first structure and then ask for the money, or you just ask for the money and then you structure? Are we putting the carriage in front of the horse again? That's a good question, because the last $100 million, we mouthspent those monies that were destined for the high school and for two middle schools. So you see, ya no podemos. We're up to here with taxes. And you know, if we look at special districts and plus the municipality and the airport, we owe billions of dollars now. And who's going to have to pay that money? The taxpayer. Comparison of schools. Los Ferment School District is building a high school for $25 million with a capacity of 1,300 students. We're building a high school, I guess, this time around, for how many students? At $50 million a shot. We don't even have plans. We haven't even designed the school yet. We know we're going to buy 80 acres over there in Military Highway. I wonder if Inohosa has anything to do with the selling of that property. These are your monies. You need to wake up and say, what's happening? Take your hands out of my pocket. Because we cannot afford to continue to mouthspend the monies of the public. You see, here, the people make $5.35 an hour. You should be ashamed of yourself if you do not take care of the people's money, because you know you're making the hundreds of thousands. Some people make in their lifetime what you earn in a year. So we have to have some accountability. Who was the person that was with Mr. Solkowski? Who was the person that used to say that he loved the children? Where is he now? Where's his love for the children? He has his love for himself. We have a lot of egotistical persons here in this system that need to be... Monos ya compa, ya no se puede. And then we start caring for the children. This is not so. This is not true, that we care for the children. Now I want some accountability on the $135 million, Mr. Sanchez. I need to find out what the state's going to pay and why we're asking for the $135 million at one crack. Are you fast-tracking like Ms. Garcia over there at the university? And we're going to have to need a manager of funds? Do we not have people here that have the knowledge of administration? Thank you, but we need a lot of work. We need a lot of work, because you know, you're getting deep into our pockets, and we're getting tired of it.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. Our next person is Francisco Zifuentes, District Concerns.
Good afternoon, President of the Board, Board Members, Mr. Gonzalez. My name is Francisco Zifuentes. I'm a representative for School District Employees Organization. The previous speakers brought you the good news, bringing you the bad news. For the past few years, I have been complaining to most of you and other board members about the discrimination I and my organization have suffered from the administration itself due to the fact that we were not ever invited or were allowed to invite employees to join our organization. Many of you told me, don't worry, Mr. Zifuentes, we'll take care of it. We'll talk to the superintendent, we'll take care of it, we'll take care of it, and nothing happened. Nothing has ever... It just got worse. This year got worse. I mean, I suffer humiliation this year, and it's not the first time it happened, and the good thing is I'm used to it. It doesn't bother me. I was invited, the administration called me at my house, my office, and invited me to come and set up a table and an in-service. And voila, I was there. I woke up 4:30, 5:00 in the morning. I said, well, finally, I'm going to get to talk to some of the employees. The person in charge of the in-service didn't know nothing about it. I was not allowed to set up a table. And I came and talked to administration, and they told me, there is no way I'm going to allow anybody to set up a table inside the cafeteria in transportation. And I asked administration, I said, is that the way that you're all going to run this district? You know, and they took offense to my words. So what happened next? Some of their personal friends and a personal organization was invited inside the cafeteria. I was not called, I was not invited, but those other people were there signing members to join the organization. And I see some faces that you're kind of wondering, what is he talking about? And you know exactly what I'm talking about. This year, it got worse. And good thing, I'm used to being discriminated against for many years. This brings, to case what I'm going to speak next, is about the search for superintendent. And everybody has... And the community is very much against what you, the board members, are doing in this district at this time. Most of them would like to talk to you, they don't know how to approach you, or you already know that you must search for the best and most qualified person for this district. You need, and you always put it in writing, when you're going to terminate an employee, in the best interest of the district. Even when that employee made a minor infraction, you always want to do it for the best interest of the district. So do it for the best interest of the district to hire someone. And I don't have nothing against Mr. Gonzalez or anybody else, but you must search for the most qualified person. Don't do what the port is doing, hiring a person without the degree or the knowledge to run a multimillion-dollar operation. Don't do it like that. It's a shame, it's a crime. Do it in the best interest of the district, that the five or so people you have within the district be allowed to bring their applications to a committee, and you review those applications, give them an opportunity like they deserve, and then choose the best person in the best interest of the district. And as far as I'm concerned, I don't have the money to file a lawsuit against you, the district, for what you did to me, but you board members, you can do something about it. Don't make me promises, do something about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zifuentes. Next person is George Iborrego, Miscellaneous Concerns.
Mr. Lehman, Board Chairman, I'm glad you're doing well and back to work. Board members, administrators, school is back. Six weeks' grades went in as of Friday for most of us, except those that missed the deadline. And we were told, but I wasn't one of those. And I feel blessed that there are so many principals here, because I want to talk to you. May I? It is time for the administration to encourage our teachers and our staff and our maintenance and to help us to do our work. And since you're here and I know you're listening, don't keep us too late, because we have families. Don't get us to come in too early. Some of us have to take our kids to school. We have our hours to work. We work them for you. Help us to do our work. Help us to have our kids be successful. Help us to lower that horrendous dropout rate. Help us, help us, help us. In reference to the grants, as an association, the Texas State Teachers Association and all its affiliates, we do not support the Governor's Incentive Grant. We do not like the program, we don't like the way it's set up, we don't like its goals. As a matter of information and reality, we're going to take the money. Oh, yes, we're going to take the money. Those grants were designed to be divisive for our campuses. But at Porter, and I'm pretty sure, based on Ms. Renfro's comments, at other schools in this district, what we did is we rose to the occasion and we chose to share with every single person on that campus, not to give it to the guy that had 110 students, or girl, and had 110 pass, because they were all AP, pre-AP, GT, FedEx, and UPS. We chose to help out the guy or gal that is doing special ed, because we are all in this boat together. AYP and all this other stuff that is being thrown at us from the state and from the feds is going to hurt everybody on a campus, including the janitors. We are all in this boat together, and I'm proud of my fellow teachers at Porter and at the other campuses here in BISD, that we rose to the occasion and chose to share at the other campuses here in BISD, that we rose to the occasion and chose to share the bounty with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iborrego. Next person is Ernesto De Leon, Brownsville Herald's Sunday's editorial.
Good afternoon, members of the Brownsville Independent School District Board of Trustees. Gonzalez, ladies and gentlemen, my name's Ernesto De Leon. How many of you saw this Sunday? Or how many didn't see it or didn't read it? I don't know about you guys, but I was upset with what I read here. And this is the reason why I'm here today. And Sunday's, I cover the first Brownsville Herald editorial opinion, was critical of the school board's decision to consider in-house candidates for the superintendent's jobs that we need to fill. The decision to consider the in-house candidates, apparently they're on the post, they're opposed to this. And I quote, "Promoting from within is not a bad idea, if there is a deserving candidate." What an insult. What an insult to our educators here tonight. I take that, I take that really, it really upsets me, because I can see a lot of people here that are qualified, that have a degree, and have paid the price to be where they're at. And to say that y'all are not deserving, I question that. Our educators are apparently whoever wrote this article wants this board to pay an outsider to dictate who they think would be the best person to fill this position. This has been tried before and has gotten us nowhere. Remember that not all that glitters is gold. And I hate for an outsider to come to tell us who they think is the best person to fill this job. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but academically, our district has declined in the last two and three years. Our past superintendent was selected by paying a so-called reputable firm to suggest the best candidate to fill this superintendent's position. What did it get, what did it get us? No question that he was a very likable person, but so am I. But I can't fill that job. I don't think I'd do a good job. I know that whoever is selected, he or she, from within, can do as well, if not a better job. And why do I say so? Because this person that is from this area, that has been here with us, knows the area, knows the people, knows the staff, knows what works and what doesn't within the system. It will not take this person one year, if not more, to get his or her feet on the ground. And I dare say that he or she will try harder to do a better job than somebody from the outside. And the article goes on to say, "If Mr. Gonzalez happens to be the choice, as we suspect," in a quote, "it strikes us as being an ordinary selection." My God. And it further states that ordinary description also applies to the current school board members. I don't think so, fellas, ladies and gentlemen, I don't think so. But at any rate, I emphatically disagree with whoever wrote this article, this editorial. They don't know y'all like I know you. And it saddens me to have them think so. But I wanna thank you for the hard work that you do, and we appreciate your help to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Last person is Maria V. Gonzalez, Third Annual Bina National Conference.
Good evening, Mr. Lehman, Mr. Gonzalez, members of the board, audience members. On behalf of the Brownsville Independent School District, UT Brownsville, and the Colegio de Educación de Matamoros, I would like to invite you to the 13th Annual Bina National Conference. You're gonna be receiving an invitation, and it'll be for the forum that will kick off the conference on the 27th of October at the Teatro de Reforma in Matamoros. Collaboration conversation is the focus of this learning event. Educators from both sides of the border will meet and will discuss issues addressing assessment. The whole conference has at the heart of it to collaborate, to share the same things that both sides' issues have in the area of assessment. And the whole idea is that assessment should inform our educational practice. The conference promises several sessions for all participants, both in English and in Spanish. There'll be a keynote address that'll start off on the 27th, and numerous sessions will be held on the next day, which is Saturday. Numerous sessions, some of our staff will hopefully be presenting at. We will be asking for your approval for our educators to attend this conference, which is in its 13th year. This collaboration again is between UTB, BISD, and the Colegio de Educación de Matamoros. We ask for your approval on Agenda Item Number 10, so that this collaboration will continue to flourish, and this collaboration will result in the exchange of methodology between the educators of both countries. I wanted to ensure you that all appropriate professional leaves will be filled out for any participant from BISD that will attend the conference, and they'll be covered under our insurance through the professional leave and workman's comp should any incidents occur. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we'll move on to Item 9, Close Meeting. As pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.074 and 551.082, the Board of Trustees goes into close meeting to hear a Level 3 Board Review and Grievance, Item 6, Level 3 Grievance of Kathy Gomez, Number 004-06/07. Slash 07 is rescheduled.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, due to a discrepancy in the record and based on the motion of the attorney, the board has granted that this matter be postponed until the record is complete and made available.
Okay, we don't need a motion, just on the record. Okay, thank you. Move on to Item 10, Consent Agenda. I've received a list from my colleagues indicating that there is no need for discussion or deliberation on the following agenda items. Under A, recommend approval of the following general function items. Item 8, 9, 12, 13, 15, 22. Under B, recommend approval of the following payments, number 24, 25, and 26. Under C, recommend approval of the following budget amendments, number 27. Under D, recommend approval of the following contracts and agreements, number 30. And I guess we're gonna have to take it, because it's asking for possible action. So we'll take it, take back 30, we'll discuss it. Under 11, Close Meeting, A, Personal Matters, Item 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, and 40, 42 has been pulled. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent items, as read?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve in a second, although some favor signified by raising hands, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Take up, under A, recommend approval of the following general function items. Take Item 10, recommend approval for BISD's instructional personnel to travel to Matamoros de Malipas, Mexico on October 27th through the 28th, 2006, to participate in the 13th Annual Bina National Conference. Services to be purchased subject to the district's needs and funding, is their motion to approve.
Move, second.
Motion and second, discussion, Ms. Galván.
Yes, this is a meeting that we are being invited to at our sister city, and they're gonna be discussing critical educational issues. And I just wanted to take the time to commend the bilingual department and Mrs. Gonzalez and the administration for building bridges with our sister city instead of walls.
Great. Any additional comments? There's a motion and second to approve Item 10, although some favor signified by raising hands, saying aye. Motion carries. Item 11, recommend approval to provide four charter buses for Valley Interfaith on Sunday, October 22nd, 2006, to travel to Saint Joan of Arc Church, West Laco, Texas. Charges per bus include fuel costs, is their motion to approve? Motion and second to approve Item 11, Ms. Galván.
So I just wanted to make sure that these buses would not be needed for our students or for our district.
Do you want me to answer?
Yes, sir, Mr. Galván. It's not me, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. No, at this particular time, I think I spoke with Ms. Fox on it, and she's perfectly comfortable with this, so there should be no problem. Yeah, so, son.
Additional comments? Okay, then motion and second to approve Item 11, although some favor signified by raising hands, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item 14, recommend approval to accept the HVAC project district-wide as substantially complete, is their motion to approve?
Move, second.
Motion and second to approve Item 14, Mr. Munoz, discussion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have the punch list, which consists of page 88 through 91, and I'm wondering if that punch list is fairly up to date.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, members of the board. Mr. Tapia, we discussed this this afternoon, I think most of the punch list is already being taken care of. Want to address the board on that?
Yes, Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. President, Board, Pat Lehman, members of the board. Approximately 80 to 90% of those items have been completed, there's very few items left as of today.
Well, that sounds good, but this punch list consists of, I counted, 73 items, and there's multiple items in that, literally, there's hundreds of items to be corrected. And if it's now 80%, I would very strongly urge that this not be, that we not declare this complete. The items that we're presented with here, there are numerous safety issues for one. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Tremendous amount of safety issues here, plus there's some very serious operational Reading these punch lists, I don't think you'd even wanna operate some of these units. But I think that if indeed this punch list is out of date, we should have an update for this meeting. But predicated upon unless someone would like to go through the list with us and convince us that this is indeed been corrected, then I don't see how we could approve this as being essentially complete, certainly not with this list. And how could, I have to say, how could anybody, and this is what was given to us, how could anybody evaluate this list and ask for that designation be awarded? This job is not complete, the way I read this list. This is far from complete. Many, many man-hours to be done here.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. Once again, it's not complete, sir, it's substantially complete.
Yes.
Substantially complete meaning 95, 96%, up to 98% complete. Knowing that we will never close out a project until everything is totally complete, that's always been our standard operating procedure. The HVACs are working, they're operational. The engineer, which is HCR engineering, basically has looked at it and say, "It's operational, therefore, it's basically in our area of be utilized, and we need to utilize the air conditioning." We would never close out a project as totally complete until we're totally satisfied with it. But when it gets to be about 95, 96% complete, we usually do it as substantially complete. This is a big project, it's numerous schools, but most of it has been done. This is what normal operating procedures are, and when the engineer says, "It's ready for substantial completion," and it's their recommendation, this is what we do. Naturally, we take the punch list item and we keep on working it. As far as this punch list is concerned, it's, well, why is new a new list? Because it's continuous. We are required to produce this for production two weeks ago, because that's the way the board agendas have to come in, by the previous week, by the engineer. We could provide you an update if you wanted me to, you called me earlier, I would have given you a complete update earlier this afternoon, says revise the punch list item.
Mr. Gonzalez, this list is dated July 28th, so it's pretty old. Most of these, probably just about a half-page left worth to do.
And we'll provide the board with a complete update if necessary, but we're satisfied with the engineers.
Mr. Lehman.
Well, like I say, I don't know what remains to be done. There were numerous safety issues here, and there was time to get us this information. We have this email to us before the meetings. If you have it, then why don't we have it? And quite frankly, the, being on the audit committee, and while we all get audit information, I'm disturbed that not, in the not-too-recent past, our auditors have discovered that we have gone through this exercise and accepted properties that are essentially complete, and they were not complete, far from complete. And I don't know if we're just trying to help someone out, or, but there's a basis for my concerns here, and I think that we need to tighten up this area.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. Yes, like I said, the engineer is the one that seals, he's the person that recommends. Mr. Tapia and his staff have looked at it, I met with Mr. Tapia this afternoon, and he assured me that most of it had been done and they were ready to go. Once again, Mr. Munoz, and I apologize if, next time I'll know that you want an updated list before the board meeting. I apologize, I didn't know you needed an updated list, but I'd be glad to provide one from now on. Mr. Tapia, probably might be an updated list every time there's a substantial completion that's coming up.
Well, this list is five days old, it's not very old, and certainly with these, the type of these 73 items that are outstanding, could never, never say we were substantially complete, far from it.
Okay. Mr. Galván.
Mr. Lehman. You know, I just heard that perhaps that Mr. Gonzalez and Mr. Tapia had gotten together before the meeting and had gone over this list. Perhaps Mr. Tapia can give us the information, some of these projects that Mr. Munoz is very concerned about, maybe he has the latest information now, that can satisfy his concerns. Because I agree with him, we need to be updated in some of this stuff, and for us to make a better decision on, based on information, updating information. So, Mr. Tapia, and you met before the board meeting and discussed this, and you were very pleased that it was 95 substantial completed, perhaps Mr. Munoz can relate some of these concerns that you have, and Mr. Tapia can give us an answer.
Sure. Be glad to.
I would be satisfied, after all, you met with him and discussed some of this.
Sure, I'd be glad to. I mean, I don't know what, which ones are you concerned with, and, Mr. Tapia, can you go ahead and address those issues?
Well, first of all, Mr. Munoz, what exactly are you looking for that might not be complete? What is a specific answer, a question rather? There are four pages, there were 73 items here, serious items. Many of those 73 items were, are, not were, I don't know the status of them, are safety issues, operability, you know, wiring, controls aren't hooked up, so that's not complete. This is only five-day-old report, four, five-days-old. I see many, many man-hours required to complete this list, and if this list is just five-days-old, it's not gonna be done in a week or two.
Well, I guess the question would be, what is complete to the administration, and maybe that's the answer that we need to get, because Mr. Munoz's completion schedule might be different from the administration's completion, so go ahead, Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Tapia. I mean, do you want us to go every, each one item by item?
No, I don't think we wanna do that.
What we're talking about is evidently he has a major.
Concern.
Concerns.
I wanna know which ones.
That's right, and gave us a major one and let him.
I guess the answer, the question would be, Mr. Tapia, can you elude or shed some light on the electrical completion?
Yes, a walkthrough was done with our inspector and the engineer, they went over this. I'm not sure where you're getting the five days, unless I'm seeing it, but this was turned in two weeks ago, so it's gotta be more than two weeks old.
I heard 7:28 mentioned tonight. I heard seven-twenty-eight mentioned tonight.
July?
July.
Oh, seven-twenty-eight, eight-twenty.
It's two months old.
Oh, my God. Well, then what's taking it this long? So why don't we have an updated report? Why would you submit a two-month-old punch list? I don't understand that.
That's why, that's what I asked him, if anything's taken care of.
Basically, what we want to do is show you the items that are caught that are wrong. Most of the time, you only see a page with one or two items, and there's discussions or comments, is that all that you found? So this is just trying to tell you the areas that we found that were not complete. And as of the time they submitted it, most of the items, maybe three or four, I understand, have not been completed. The units are on the roof, they're running, they're cooling the schools. So if the board doesn't feel comfortable accepting it tonight, we can certainly wait.
So the answer is there's not an updated punch list, is that correct? Or do you have one?
I don't have it with me, no.
There is one, but you don't have it with you?
The engineer has the report.
There's an updated walkthrough or punch list, whatever you call it.
Basically, it's the same report, but with checkmarks as to the ones that were.
Can you make that available to, I guess, Mr. Gonzalez can make it available to Mr. Munoz?
Sure, sure.
And make sure that you concur with what administration is saying. Mr. President, if indeed that is the case, that there's just a handful of items here, and our people are satisfied that operability and safety is not jeopardized, I withdraw any objections I have to this. But I really, really, you know, to submit this to us for review, and for me to go through here and count seventy-three items, and then find out that this document is two months old, when this decision had to be made based upon some sort of information, why don't we have that information? Why doesn't superintendent have that information? So why don't we have it? So it's not good, but I'll accept your.
Perhaps in the future, there's got to be better communication between the architect and our personnel, because if it's two months old, or whatever, the weeks are old, I think we need to do a better job in keeping track before they come and do a presentation to the board. I'm pretty sure it was acknowledged today.
The issue would be here, make sure that the data is current and updated, the background information. So I think, I mean.
We'll get it tomorrow.
To answer Mr. Munoz's concerns, there is new data that will substantiate the position of administration. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And I apologize. Getting up on the list every time.
Suspense file. Okay, I think they've already taken a bash. They understand. There's a motion and second to approve. Any further comments?
There's a motion and second to approve item 14. All those in favor signify by raising hand. All those, okay, motion carries unanimous. Item sixteen, recommend approval to rent Triple T program space from North Park Plaza. A Texas partnership Brownsville, Texas, in the amount not to exceed $9,996 from budgeted state special education funds on a month-by-month basis. Eight-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars per month for the 2006, 2007 school years. A motion to approve.
Move.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve item sixteen. Discussion, Ms. Galván.
I was just happy to see that opportunities are being given to our moderate and severely disabled students. And they get to have the opportunity to adapt to the real world, and it's something to be commended on also. Thank you.
Mr. Munoz.
Thank you, sir. I would like to know, I have three questions. What, how many participants do we have currently in this program?
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Mr. Lehman, members of the board, I've asked Ms. Montfauves, who is now the AA in charge of special services, to address that. Ms. Montfauves?
Mr. Lehman, Mr. Gonzalez, members of the board. If I may, sir, I will definitely put that in my Friday letter for you. I would not want to estimate untrue guess.
And, Mr. Gonzalez, I'd also like to know what the staffing situation is, how the staff spends their time. Are they full-time or part-time, or are they dedicated?
Ms. Montfauves, I think you have that information.
Yes, sir. Mr. Lehman, Mr. Gonzalez, they are full-time. They dedicate themselves not only to the instruction, but then, of course, also to the monitoring and the chaperoning of the students.
And are they in residence at that location?
No, sir, they are, they attend a regular school day like the rest of our students do. I'm sorry, did I misunderstand the question?
Well, my question is, I know where the location is, and I've visited it many times. I've never seen anybody there.
Oh, that would be because they are out in the field with the students, chaperoning them on their job sites.
That's where they work at.
Mr. Lehman. Yeah, I understand the space, and I was reading the background information, and this is on a monthly basis. And I was wondering, why is it on a monthly basis? And do they need more space than just the one, the one at the plaza, North Plaza? I know what happens, you know, they have a transition, then they put them at the work site. It's a beautiful program. What I'm asking is, do they have sufficient area for those young people that, I don't know if Ramiro's here, that we can provide, because when I read it, it seems to me like they were limited, limited in that particular area.
Call Mr. Rendon.
Mr. Rendon is our interim special education administrator.
Good evening, Mr. Lehman, members of the board, Mr. Gonzalez. The Triple T program is in, it is in play at this time. I do not have the exact number of students at the, there was a question previously posed. The students do go to this, it's like a business-like setting. They do have a conference there and meetings with the teachers and support staff. And there appears at this time to be plenty of room to meet the needs of these students. And then from there, they do go out to the job sites and to the field.
But that's good, because perhaps we, the school district, need to provide adequate facility for those kids also. That's the whole point, Mr. Rendon.
Additional comments? Okay, motion and a second to approve item sixteen. All those in favor signify by raising hands, saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item seventeen, recommend approval to select the competitive seal proposals and the competitive bidding construction delivery methods as authorized by the Texas Education Code in accordance with section, subchapter B purchases. Contracts 44.031 of the Texas Education Code for consideration for all of 2006 BI's debond program projects. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Motion to approve is your second. Motion and second to approve item seventeen. Discussion, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, I don't, I'm in agreement with this, with this, with this motion. What I do have is, I would like to point out and ask a few questions, if I might address the superintendent.
Go ahead.
This is, this is kind of a mishmash here in that it includes 141, elementary school 141, which was not part of the bond issue requirements. It includes high school number six, middle school number twelve, which is really the eleventh one, confusing. But I would like to suggest that we consider and add to this mix, because I don't want to be, I don't think we should be confined in our bidding process to perhaps going out for four elementary schools and two middle schools at the same time, because a motion wasn't done at a point in time. We understand that 141 will be paid out of fund balance anyway. It's not going to be bond money. So 141, 42, and 43, of course, will be paid out of the bond money. And, but they will all come under some of the umbrellas of the management contract that we're talking about here tonight. So for planning purposes, and for, I really think that we need to be able to add to this list. Like I say, I know that we can come very close to doing two middle schools for the price of the 25 million. There's no way we can use 25 million dollars on one middle school. We better not. And the two, two elementary schools for 30 million, 30 million dollars, and people have mentioned that and pointed it out, that it's impossible, not impossible, but there's no way we need that kind of money for two elementary schools. So I would very much like to entertain the mechanism of adding 144 there and middle school number 13, because our formula requires that we have two, two middle schools to service every high school. And it, you know, we always play catch-up. And there's no reason to be playing catch-up at this point in time, when we do have the resources to, to. The only thing we need to catch up with is that curve, that overcrowding curve. And we have the unique ability at this point in time to do some really great things for the district, because of our fund balance, which is protected by, by some policy that we're putting in place. Seventy-five-day minimum balance, floating balance. And this, these monies that we've been fortunate enough that the voter has given us. But I think that we need to look at getting two middle schools into the mix, contracting with two middle schools in mind. We'll get better prices for the first one and the second one. And add that third elementary school to come out of fund balance money. I know that we can build three elementary schools for 30 million dollars in any, if for some reason, over the course of the next two and a half years, that these schools will be built, we need to come up with one or two million dollars. It's money well spent out of fund balance. We can make it up without any problem whatsoever. So I think for, for the, for the sake of getting the best prices, I think that we, at this point in time, should, should really count on going after two middle schools and four elementary schools. I'll make a recommendation that we approve item 17, and then if Mr. Gonzalez concurs, he can bring back another item, adding 144 and 145, actually. Because we don't know exactly how much money spill over, and we might be shooting ourselves short. And we need to, and we need, we very much need to have a planning meeting very, very quickly, and come to an understanding, absolute understanding of what we're going to shoot for here, and how many, if we're going to do number 13 and so forth. Because there's a middle school and an elementary also, so I would recommend that we approve item 17 and let the administration come back and add to this batch. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, members of the board. Point well taken on all the issues that have been brought up. However, we've got to remember one thing is that the board is the only one that can select the delivery method. Administration does not have the right to select the delivery methods. That's a function of the board. We bring it to you as recommendations. So if we go to middle school number 13 and elementary number 144, whenever that decision is made, we have to come back to the board and select the delivery method, which will probably be competitive seal proposals like we're projecting for all the new, the new schools. So rest assured that when we decide to go to another middle school or add one or two more elementaries, you have to come back to the board to decide what type of delivery method we're going to be doing on those schools.
And that will surface during the workshop.
Yes.
A more definitive placement. Additional comments? Yes, as I said at the onset, that I didn't have any problem that this could be added to, because we will get better prices. The dynamics will be in everybody's favor to add to this. We, there's no doubt that we have overcrowding in our elementary schools. We can't go with eleven, 1,200 kids in the schools. We've got to do what we can do, and we can do things to bring this down. We don't need to wait till we need, absolutely need. We can use two, two middle schools right now. And with our projected growth rate, we will utilize them. So we have an opportunity, I'm just, I'm belaboring the point. We have an opportunity at this point in time to not be reactive. We can do something ahead of time, and we will be ready for the needs of the district in two, three, four years, and not be, doing a catch-up. And that, and that means going after four, four elementaries and two middle schools. And if we can add these to the mix, I'm perfectly happy with approving this tonight.
Then there's a motion and a second to approve item 17. All those in favor signify by raising hands, saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Move on to item 18, recommend approval to authorize administration to solicit request for qualifications for project management firm to administer and oversee the new school construction projects listed in the 2006 BI's debond program. Motion to approve.
I move to approve.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay, motion fails. Move on to item 19, recommend approval to authorize administration to solicit construction cost estimating and engineering consulting services relating to the city of Brownsville's old Levi plant building and grounds, and to follow up with a negotiated fee for said services. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
On item 19, you guys got to stay up. Second. We'll bring it back if you want to revisit. Motion and a second to approve item 19.
Second.
Okay, there we go. Discussion, Mr. Colunga, item 19.
On the need for a consulting, we had previous reports in the past as far as based on inspections from within the district staff, and it was reported that that particular location was not feasible for the application that we were considering. So my question would be, why are we still looking at this particular site?
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, Mr. Colunga, members of the board. During the last facilities committee meeting, we discussed that, and so the direction we got there was, let's see how much it would actually cost to do a cost estimate to see, to bring it up to the standards we would be looking at, rather than just allowing in-house to do it. We say, well, you know, it's only fair to get a good price to see what it is that's going to be costing. They're looking at it for warehousing, for maybe food service, and for other areas that would be considered. Not necessarily for transportation as such by itself, but as a overall general warehouse. And so we say, well, if we're going to do that, I think it's only fair for the board to look at it in its entirety and see how much it's going to cost for air conditioning, everything being considered for air conditioning. There is some asbestos there, removal of asbestos and so. Even though we did our own takeoff on this before, we felt that when the committee met, there was a consensus to look at it again, and we have no problems looking at it again. But we can't recommend anything concerning that issue until we find a firm cost on it, and administration is saying that we're going to go into that area, and it's something that the board wants to look at. We certainly need to get a very true cost estimate as far as from outsiders are concerned. Things have changed. The prices has changed since the last time. And as far as cost, construction costs are concerned, certainly there's some areas that need to be looked at in there. If the board really wants to go into that direction of making that place as a warehouse, we also were indicated that perhaps the city could give us that property at a lot lesser price than they would have offered it before. We're still looking at that, that that's a possibility. They would also have the cost too. So we're looking at it from that point of view, but we cannot go out there and do all these cost estimates by a firm, and we don't have approval by the board to go out there and do those cost estimates.
Additional comments? Okay, Mr. Aguilera.
I think Mr. Colunga said some statements I was going to ask concerning the administration. At one time, he made some kind of recommendations, so I'm not going to repeat that. My concern is hiring a consultant, more or less, how much money do you estimate it's going to cost us, you know? So that's, I mean, just a ballpark figure.
Ballpark figure? It's hard to say. Probably look anywhere between 10 and 20,000 dollars to give us a total estimate. And I'm being honest with you, because you're going to have to make evaluations of what's there and what's not there. So I hate to give you a firm figure. It's a general ballpark figure. And if it is what I consider too much money, I certainly come back to the board and say, are you prepared to spend this money on this cost estimate?
That's good. Also, you mentioned there were other uses of that building, other than just transportation.
Right. And we would be looking at it for more for the warehouse. It's a big place for warehousing. It's got docks and got everything. I'm going to tell you something that has to be done in the very near future. One way or the other, doesn't matter to me which way we go. It's, I think it's something that really needs to be studied by the board. And the buildings back here where maintenance and warehouses, if we don't fix them, which I don't know how much money it would take to fix those buildings. We're going to have to either build warehouses or rent warehouses or whatever. That's not a good place. place anymore.
And we are aware of that, Mr. Gonzalez, because in the long-term study, we, we've mentioned that something has to be done for the warehouse and all those facilities.
Right.
Our concern was, is this the best place available? You see, that's it, and a consultant fee. That's just information. And I'm glad you said it's okay, I'm gonna go out there and search. If it's too out of reach, I'll come back to the board for further review. I think I'm satisfied with it.
Mr. Munoz?
And, and I'm glad the superintendent mentioned the state of these buildings back here, that it's a 40-year-old lumberyard, basically.
Needing a $2 million roof, is that the one?
Needing a $2 million roof at this point in time.
We can buy the other building for about $2 million.
Heaven knows what else. So, you know, the, the roof alone will pay for more than half of, of, of the other facility and 19 acres of prime property that, that I don't even wanna talk about here because, but we need to check the chiller out, and, and perhaps that will give us some bargaining power. I understand the chiller may have some problems, major, minor, we don't know, but someone will have to, I understand there's a, a very good, uh, uh, chiller expert in Harlingen that, that can assess it very reasonably. It, it should not cost a lot of money to, to check out the chiller unit. But as I understand it, that's the biggest problem there. As far as asbestos and so forth, we can make mountains out of molehills. We've seen that happen here in the city of Brownsville, that this was asbestos-infested, and it was gonna cost hundreds of thousands or millions. It was gone Monday morning from a weekend. So there's things that can be done that we don't have to do the hard way, and, and the district can, can come out very well. But hopefully we'll be able to assess this, and, 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 and if, if we decide it's, it's usable, then, then get real serious with, with the price.
Mr. Lehman?
Let me just, Mr. Kalunga?
Yes, I also wanted to mention that, that something else to consider would be whether or not there is flooding in that area, the...
I'd like to answer that.
Whether residents could be asked about that.
I'd, I'd like to answer that, sir.
Hold on.
Pardon, I'm sorry.
And, and some of those things, I, I think will come out, yes, I'm also concerned about the flooding area, which I think you mentioned it when you made a presentation when you were area superintendent, about that area that you were concerned about. But I think that will come out as you make the study.
Right.
And because we don't want to just go out there and get a lemon, just because it's out there, you know? And so all those things, we'd like for the administration to look at it and give us a report.
And the satellite bus transportation station, I think that, that, that can be very definitive also in the study to where it's logistically possible. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, I, I've heard this bogus, bogus, uh, statement about flooding at the airport, and, and it's nearly laughable. I suggest that anybody that goes to the airport, and, and we all use the airport occasionally, next time you drive by there, you look at the building, and you'll be looking up at it. It is built six or eight feet higher than the mean elevation in the area. It is, if it floods, your house on the west side of Brownsville will flood. It, it will not flood. Plus, in addition to that, if you recall, six, eight years ago, the federal government spent, I think, five, six, seven million dollars building a retention pond at the airport and doing some drainage, enhance the drainage at the airport. So the airport is very unlikely to flood, and certainly that area, that on Billy Mitchell and the corner of Kalunga, that, that building is never going to flood. I, I guarantee you that.
Mr. Aguilera?
Mr. Munoz, we're, we're not talking about the preference to the building itself, I know how it's built because you yourself showed the building. We're talking about the grounds where transportation, where the vehicles might be going into the building, that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about that the building itself is gonna be flooded because we know it's built in a high concrete, what do you call it, a foundation?
Well, the study, I think that, that would reveal.
That's right.
All queries and concerns, so. Additional comments? Yes, or Mr. Powers?
Thank you, President Lehman, Mr. Gonzalez. I think for future meetings, guys, might be my opinion, but this is, gen item should have been held in closed meeting because this is real estate. We haven't...
It, it's, it's not a, we're not asking for the purchase, asking for a study, so it, it's, it's, can I be discussed? And if we're going to decide on purchase, then it definitely goes to, to closed meeting, but to do any evaluation, what discussed in the facilities committee meeting already was not, didn't make that, that cut.
And the owner is the city of Brownsville along with the federal government, so.
Mr. Lehman, we're just looking at concerns about that area, the building, if it's feasible, but we're not talking about, we're gonna buy anything. All right.
Okay. Ready?
Yes, I'm fine.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to approve item 19. All those in favor signify by raising your hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those against? None? Okay, motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Let me ask a question here. Did, we, we, I, I may have been confused a little while ago.
On item 18?
On item 18, I, I thought we were on item 20.
No, you'll have to revisit. You'll, you can make a motion to revisit.
When we, when can we do that? Tonight?
Counselor? And on Roberts?
Anybody?
You can interject. You want to revisit item 18?
Was there, was there a motion?
There was a motion, but no second.
Well, I would like to second it, so I'd like to entertain.
Well, let's, procedurally, I have to take a vote on revisiting?
Yes.
So there's a motion to revisit item 18. Is there a second?
I will second it.
Oh, well, there's a motion. You're making the motion to revisit.
Oh, well, to revisit, yes.
Okay, is there a second? To revisit item 18.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and second. All those in favor in revisiting item 18, raise your hand saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those against?
Doesn't make it.
And motion fails, so we don't revisit 18.
Thank you, no revisit.
Okay, item 20. Discussion, consideration, and possible action on the appointment of a committee to review project under the bond program. Discussion, who put this item on, but I'm gonna start going for discussion with Mr. Kalunga, with Mr. Munoz. Everybody took a number.
Now we're on 20.
Yes. We're on 20.
Let's see here. 16, 17, 20.
President Lehman? It'd be nice to have a presentation by Mr. Gonzalez, because you...
Well, uh...
Could start it.
Uh, there's discussion by Mr. Munoz. Okay, I'll move on to Mr. Kalunga.
Yes, I wanted to thank Mr. Gonzalez for the information on the, from McAllen, I see, I think that they have a good committee as well as the, the way it's organized that could be something we could try to put in place as, as a matter of expediency, but it certainly is very, very well stated. The, the bylaws, of course, anything that is in writing that helps to identify all of the rules and how to follow those rules certainly would be an advantage for what we're about to undergo as a bond, bond building project to have an oversight committee.
If I may, Mr. Lehman?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Kalunga, members of the board. I put this gen item because it's been discussed, and, and I like the idea. There's a lot of people in this community that really put a, a real effort into passing this bond issue. And I think from the, from what I gather from the community and as I visit in the community, there's a real sense of they want to participate in the implementation of this. This is a way of getting the community to be a part of this bond issue and ensuring that they have a voice in it. It, it's something that, that I encourage, and definitely they will have, provide the input and be visiting with, with staff and be visiting with the board concerning where we're at, the time of implementation, what status we have, reviewing the plans, getting, getting involved is more the word that, that I need to be used. And this community involvement is not just something that staff along with an architect and, and the board, but it's a community effort. I don't foresee very many of us being around when we build the next high school. This is a major project. This is high school number six. I think it's gonna be a big endeavor in this community because of the fact that there are people that, that really made an effort and gave money to support this bond issue on their own, that maybe they should be given the opportunity, the whole community, to get involved. I, I looked at McAllen because they already have it, where there are $100 million bond issue. If the board makes a motion to the point that says, yes, let's look into this, I would certainly recommend that the board look at that, I look at a committee of about 12 to 15 people. I would encourage that each, each board member would nominate a person to be in this committee, and then maybe allow administration to get another, you know, there's seven of you, to, to get another five people nominated and be approved by the board to be in this committee, and makes it a total of 12, and if you wanted to add or whatever. These are just suggestions. But I, I certainly encourage it, I think it's a good idea. We have some construction projects that are, that are out there that the, the community needs to get involved with, and we need their support just like they need us, and it's a two-way street here, and I think it'd be very good for this community to get involved in this bond program.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir. I, I agree with, with, with both Mr. Kalunga and, and Mr. Gonzalez, and I was going to, I finally found my paper, finally found it. I was going to suggest that, that, that each of us make two or three nominations, and we're gonna have to make it very clear to the people on the committees, the appointees, that this is a long-term commitment. Hopefully they'll, 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 they'll be there for a four-year period. This is, this is gonna take about four years to, to oversee this project. And probably, probably a dozen people appointed would, would meet, mean that you've got five or six showing up. So we might, we might want to appoint three apiece. I, I think that as these things go, these committees tend to thin out, and, and of course, people say, well, I'm still on the committee, so they can't be replaced. But I think that, that may, we might want to have a, a larger committee than, than, than a dozen. We'll never, we'll never have 18 people there or a dozen.
Okay, Mr. Galván? Comments?
Yes, we asked the people to go out and vote, we asked the people to help us with the bond, we asked for support, we asked for involvement. What a better way to go back and ask them to help us with these schools. It takes a whole village, as Mrs. Clinton said, to raise a child. It's a whole, I feel that we should be involved in building these schools. Everybody.
Mr. Aguilera?
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. First, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for that information, gave us on McAllen. In fact, if you read the document, it has a section in case some of them do not meet, come to those meetings, there's a process how to replace them.
Streamline.
And so it's, it's, it's a good model really to look at, and I'm glad we're looking at it. And again, it takes two, however, we need to make an effort to see that they get involved, and we have a, a committee this time around, I hope it doesn't happen like the insurance committee that we had, and sometimes we never, administration never get them back involved. And so some of the people we appointed, you know, come and tell us, say, guys, when are they gonna call us? So, and this is too much of an importance that we keep them active all the time. It, it means that we have to remind them two or three times to be present, and I share that concern with Mr. Munoz, because they also, you might have 15 and maybe six or seven would show up, show up, so that we need to constantly administration say, guys, you know, we're meeting, and it's important that we have attendance. But the model itself, it's, it's real good.
Mr. Munoz?
I neglected to add that, and I'd like to add this, that I would suggest that we encourage Mr. Gonzalez to hire, to provide for an experienced facilitator to assist in organizing and in serving the committee. I, I was on the strategic planning committee in, in '95, '96, which was a precursor to the, the bond issue. And we, we were very ably, I won't say led, but we were facilitated, we, we were, we were given the right information at the right time and, and assisted very much so by a very good facilitator that we were fortunate to have, and, and that was at that time, Mr. Rosales. I understand he's now retired, but I would hate to see, and it was a lot of work for him. The gentleman spent a lot of time at it, so I, I would, if, if Mr. Rosales is still available, he's excellent at that role. I would suggest that we can, the superintendent consider him, you might want to use your own discretionary funds, work out a deal with him, and, but I, I just can't heap enough praise on, 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 on Mr. Rosales's performance.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez, or anybody additional? Mr. Powers?
Thank you, President. Mr. Gonzalez, on this gen item, I think, I echo everybody's sentiments here. We did get the committee involved. I'm, I'm pretty sure the people that are gonna get involved, I don't think we're gonna have to pay anybody, because they're gonna come here because they want to, just like they did on $135 million bond. They were here during the rating. They helped us tremendously to give us a better rating. And I think by us picking one out of seven and you picking the rest, it's gonna work, because they want to see proposition one through four. And by their involvement, they're gonna thank us for this, because, because without them, we wouldn't have succeeded. So I want to thank you for this gen item, this is very, very well worth it.
Mr. Pres... Yes?
I, 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 I hope that, that no one got the idea that, that anyone was suggesting that anyone be paid other than perhaps a facilitator. These people will serve as volunteers.
I don't think we'd have to pay...
The facilitator will have a lot of work to do in conjunction with the, the managing contractor and the administration, so it'll be more than just showing up once a month for a meeting.
I don't think we'd have to pay anybody personally, but you'll, you'll be amazed who will get involved.
We'll close that road. This is just to start the, the ball rolling.
And he might want to donate his time.
There you go. That's how you do it.
Additional comments? Yes, or Mr. Gonzalez, you want to put closure to this?
Yes, I would need somebody to go ahead and make a motion to, to set up a committee of whatever members you all feel is appropriate, and for administration to, to go ahead and start developing some of the, the bylaws and, and that are needed to be established in this committee, and to instruct also counsel to look into, help assisting in, in developing bylaws that will keep us out of liabilities.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'll go ahead, I'll, I'll move.
Well, let me, let me ask for a motion to, for to instruct the administration to set up a committee as specified in item 20. Let, let them... Give me a hint. Uh, well, you can come back, and we can ratify this.
Okay.
I, I think we can have, find out what, in talking to Mr. Lyons and McAllen, if, if that, if that number works for him.
15 members.
You know, I think 17, I think you had requested, how many? Two from each board member and...
I, I had, I had made a recommendation of, of one by each board member and five being, being recommended by administration for the total of 12. McAllen has 15. If you wanted to go, if you wanted to go more, you could say two per each board member, that's 14, and maybe have administration at four, and that would put you at 18.
Why don't you talk to the, the bond committee from those, starting with Mr. Rusterberg and Company, and then see good feedback, and you can come back to us, and this is actually setting you in, in motion, and you can come back and finalize. We can, we, we still gonna have to ratify the bylaws.
Sure.
So at that time, that number would be interjected.
Okay.
This is just to give you the green light to go ahead and get this thing rolling.
Not a problem.
Okay? So is that your motion?
I moved it.
Okay, there's a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to instruct administration to set up a committee to review projects under the bond program. All those in favor signify by raising your hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item 21. Recommend approval to declare the buildings and real property at 1050 East Madison Street, 1102 East Madison Street, and 1124 East Madison Street as surplus and absolute, and to schedule said properties to sale and/or demolition. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve item 21. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and second. Discussion, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, the, the only thing that I, I have issue with is, is some of this wording. The wording is to schedule said properties for sale and/or demolition. I don't, I don't like the word demolition. I, I think that this probably should be put up, I agree that, that, I concur that it is, that it is surplus, we don't need it.
Yes, there's...
But I think that, that, that we should look at it, go out for offers from the private from the private or governmental sector, whether they wanna lease it or they wanna buy it. Uh, I think that's the approach we should, we should take, not, not, uh, consider demolishing it. If, if someone wants it, they can knock it down into a parking lot.
But, but Mr. Gonzalez explained why it read the way it did, so, Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, members of the board. This is something that's straight-up language that we've, uh, had in, in, in our, in our areas, uh, concerning this, and Mr. Toppa had researched that for me. However, there is certainly not, we're not concerned, gonna go demolish anything. Uh, that's not our intent. The intent is to give us permission to declare it a surplus, and basically, if you wanted to modify the motion, you could modify it to send, and to dispose of it in accordance with laws, uh, procedures that are established by the district and policies established by the district. I would like to have the opportunity to see if we can, there's a, there is a governmental agency in town that has contacted me prior to this concerning this property. I have returned the call twice, they haven't called me back. But I, I'm sure that they're still interested, from what I understand. But we can't even negotiate, I can only have the authority to start negotiating until we declare it a surplus, for one thing, and to be able to dispose of it in accordance with policies and procedures. So, this time, I'd like to go ahead and modify the motion, or modify my, my recommendation to read, to dispose of in accordance with policies and procedures as established by the district.
I'll, I'll, I can make that motion. I don't think you can. Can he, can he make the motion?
Yeah, amend it.
Well, he's just amending his, uh- He's making the recommendation. Uh, somebody needs to mo-, motion a second. Uh, Mr. Uh, who, uh, who made the motion on twenty-one?
There, there is a, a motion and a second on the floor right now, Mr. Scuero and Ms. Galván, that's currently on the floor right now.
Somebody can move to amend, right?
Uh, yeah, or they can withdraw those motions and then-
Who made the motion?
... the motion that's recommended by Mr. Gonzalez.
Who made the motion?
I'll amend the motion, even though it seems to be the same, from what I hear, but I'll amend it anyway.
Yeah.
That way, it gives me the latitude to work with another governmental agency also.
Okay. So, Mr. Or Dr. Scuero, amends the motion, uh, to read as the request for administration's, uh, terminology, and you second that?
Second.
Okay, so, uh, motion and second to approve as amended, item twenty-one. All those in favor signify by raising hand?
Hold on now, Mr. Lehman, I ask to be heard on this.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
See, we say we concur on this, it is a surplus, whereas we is all seven, it's not all seven. What we have in there is a, uh, according to the background, a surplus and there's ADA and all this stuff. Have you all been inside those buildings? The office buildings? Some of them are excellent office buildings. I mean, let's, let's not, uh, fool ourselves saying it's surplus. The, uh, Health Center has, it's a beautiful office, large spacious office. When Adán Salina was there on the tenants, on the bottom floor, it's also an excellent office of spaces. The only one I can concur is the second floor, because in fact, ghost stories, for those that are familiar with BISD, it's an old historic building.
Liberia.
You see? And the same thing goes with the parental involvement, it's adequate also. So, I don't see how we can say it's a surplus, uh, just because somebody contacted us and wanted to buy it, I wouldn't be surprised if it's, uh, the county buying for parking spaces. But that's here or there. See, what happens, those are still adequate, Mr. Gonzalez. They're usable. And you, but concur and said it's so, then why bring it up? You see? If we're talking about because they're old, like it said in the background, what about that building where the records are? Mr. Sy, they, talking about old building, that goes into the twenties and the thirties and still being utilized by BISD. All those buildings that we're just talking about tonight are usable, there's no reason. You know, some of that office can be used by PIMS. You have Mr. Tejeda and his, and his assistant in one cubby hole. He can be transferred to those offices and has special areas, um, enough area for his office. There's several people out here in central office, they're crowded, they can be utilizing those office spaces out there. So, I, I, of course, I disagree with you and, and some of these board members, they say they're surplus buildings, they're not. All you need to do is go out there and look inside those buildings. The only, like I said, I'll say it again, the only thing that is, needs to be a lot of work is the second floor of the old building, but that's been owned for years. But the, the one on the bottom has been renovated and I don't know what else, been done, excellent office, because as of months or two or so before we moved to the central administration, I visited that thing and it was perfect. In fact, the whole administrator were happy to stay at rather to go to central, because they had more space.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kalunga, you had comments also? Didn't acknowledge you.
No, well, it, it's, uh, mainly on, on the, uh, the, yeah, the amount of study that went into that, that particular, uh, recommendation and, um, why it was being, uh, recommended at this time, but I also had, uh, similar concerns about, um, if, you know, the, uh, feasibility of, or using it for, or some purpose, or how, how much study was looked at as far as options, other than to, um, to, uh, demolish or to, to, uh, sell the property.
Sure. Chakalunga, uh, Mr. Lehman, members of the board. You know, we, we declared a surplus, 'cause we have no immediate use for it. We, I say, we, administration, do not plan on making a recommendation to moving anybody over there. It's a part of town that, uh, that we, we've been trying to get out of for a long, long time. Uh, not everybody has to agree with that, certainly not in agreement. As far as administration is concerned, we have no plans of moving anybody over there at the present time. Uh, as far as, uh, some of the areas, like Mr. Aguilar said, concerning PIMS, we've already moved and in the middle section of the second floor of this building, we have some space. We have not allocated that space to anybody, simply because we're gonna start the curtain wall in this area very, very soon. As a matter of fact, the board approved it, it's on order. As soon as I start redoing the exterior walls in this building, then I have to move people into the center part of that building, so they won't have to move out completely. So, that's why I haven't assigned additional office space to anybody. We certainly need to expand in those areas. Uh, and once we get through with this building, then we'll have additional office space to be allocated to some of the people that are here. Uh, I don't anticipate, right now, moving anybody into the downtown area. Uh, of course, the, the board, if it's a consensus, I, I don't have the ability to declare it surplus, only to make a recommendation. If it is the feeling of this board that we wanna keep it, uh, for another five years, another ten years, to see if there might be a possible use, there certainly might be a possible use for it. Uh, as far as the comment about, what about the records where Mr., where we have records? Yes, that's a building that hopefully we can replace in the very near future. I don't like it the way it is. We probably need to move some stuff out of there and put records in a more permanent-type building, that's not a wooden building. Uh, is, that would be a good place, we've discussed it. Uh, it's not been the, 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 the only time, but I, I think that the, the consensus of administration, and this is just administration, would be not to go back to the downtown area. However, if the board feels that that's a good location, we can certainly remodel it, work it back up, get it to ADA standards, and utilize it in the future. But our present recommendation would be not to be utilized right now and to dispose of it by selling it, uh, however we can do it to be able to, to get maybe, if somebody else has a better use for it, that's fine. But, uh, it's not administration's recommendation, it's to utilize it again, but to declare it as surplus, surplus mean we don't need those buildings anymore. But certainly up for discussion.
Mr. Lehman? You know, Mr. Gonzalez, uh, you say you've been, for years, been talking about not moving anyone, and also ADA. Well, what's wrong with ADA? Basically, it's, I, I'll have the ramps, it's also ADA when people are working there. So, all of a sudden, you come up with all this, why we cannot have it, you see? Uh, we can utilize those buildings, if you really look at it. It's just a ma-, I don't see anything wrong with those offices, quite frankly. Uh, I don't see where the administration council is, "Let's get rid of them." It's surplus, you know, it's, and all you probably, the word says here, we did the studies, you know, but it's also a, a personal opinion, but it really, if you really look at it, there's no reason for us to get rid of these buildings or just demolish or whatever that is.
I'm ready to vote and deplo-, implod them, but anyway. Uh, any additional comments? Okay. Uh, there's a motion and a second motion, of course, being amended to reflect administration's, uh, recommendation. Uh, all those in favor signify by raising hand saying aye. Aye. All those against? Three, motion carries, four to three. Moving to item twenty-three, recommend approval to appoint, uh, a delegate to an altern-, and an alternate to the two thousand and six Tasa-Tasby Joint Annual Convention in Houston, Texas on October sixth through the eighth, two thousand and six. Um, there's a motion, but let's get, uh, a delegate and an alternate, I guess, designated first. So, Mr. Powers, you'll be appointed, but you're not going, so you can't go. Who's going? Hmm? Okay, well, no, you, you can't, I can't walk, you can't walk, we're gonna be enrollers. So, Ms. Galván? You want, I know you're going, but you wanna be, you wanna be a delegate?
I'll be a delegate.
Mr. Uh, hey, Kalunga?
I'll defer to Galván.
She's gonna be the main cheese. You're gonna be the, you're gonna be the holy cheese.
I probably, uh, cannot be there, uh, as early as some of the other-
Yeah, that's it, man, by default. We gotta be there. Okay, so, Ms. Galván, you are the delegate. Mr. Munoz, by default, you're the alternate.
I'll do it, I'll do it.
And we are looking forward to seeing you.
I will be.
Yes, sir, we are working that way, counselor. Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve Ms. Galván as the delegate and Mr. Munoz as the alternate, alternate to the two thousand and six Tasby-Tasa Joint Annual Convention in Houston. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve, second.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor signify by raising hand saying aye. It's unanimous, boys.
Wow.
Okay, item C, recommend approval to, of the following budget amendments, uh, twenty-eight. Recommend approval of budget amendment number zero four seven in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars for fund two fifty-six Texas Title One comprehensive school reform grant for Victoria Heights Elementary, new funding. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Second, motion and second to approve item twenty-eight. Ms. Galván, you have discussion?
I just, uh, when I was reading this, I did say that, uh, the part that says these grant monies will be enlarged, dedicated to working with Project Grad. I had a question on that.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, uh, Ms. Galván, members of the board. Yes, this is something that, that's been worked at, and it's still part of some of the initiatives that were started for Project Grad, and I think Ms., Ms. Hawkins, you've been able to work with that and ready to address that issue, exactly what they're gonna be doing, is that correct? Go ahead, Ms. Hawkins.
Mr. Gonzalez, President Lehman and members of the board, we're working with the Project Grad initiatives. This is the last year of a three-year grant, and the original grant was board-approved. We've already received the training from Project Grad and all the supplies, so at this time, we're currently working on, um, maintenance of the current instructional programs and alignment. So, it's all campus-based, staff development, instruction, and, um, consultants, but it's just the initiatives that were started two years ago.
I think it's fantastic, working with Project Grad. However, I don't know if it's, it's out of line or whatever question I'm gonna ask. Uh, in the summer, we had asked, uh, had made a loan to Project Grad, uh, some funding. I wonder if we ever got our money back. I mean, I don't know if it's part of this, I don't know.
I'll, I'll, I'll address it. Mr. Aguilar, Mr. Lehman, members of the board, yes, we did, uh, lend some money, with the condition that they never had any money to pay us back. And, uh, they have never had any money. I did meet with, uh, with, along with Mr. Sanchez and Ms. Ayala, with a couple of representatives from Project Grad. Uh, I don't think it's going anywhere, they're fizzling out, and, uh, this is the last initiative that we have on it. It was a very good program, and I hate to see it go away, but they just don't have the funds to continue with it. So, no, the answer is no, they never paid us back.
Okay, but of course, we don't give, I hope we don't give up and, uh, eventually keep paying after it, maybe someday they have money to give us.
We hope that one of these days, they get the funding-
Pay our money.
-and then we'll go back and try to recoup our money.
Because we're not going only in Brownsville, it's a large organization out of Houston.
That's right.
You see, so they give millions of dollars' worth of grants. It's not necessarily for, only for Brownsville, it's for the whole state, certain schools they have. So, they have the money, if you really look at it, we, uh, talk to headquarters.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll look at, Mike, you, you might wanna look at that along with Mr. Sanchez and see what we can do, trying to recoup that money. Mr. Sanchez, can you go ahead and, and, and call them? Again, you have their card, see if we can recoup some of the money.
Yeah, right.
Uh, additional comments? Okay, there's a, uh, motion and a second to approve item twenty-eight, all those in favor signify by, by raising hand saying aye. Aye, motion carries. D, rec-, uh, recommend approval of the following contract and agreements, twenty-nine, recommend approval to, and enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Brownsville Community Health Center for the two thousand and six, two thousand and seven school years. There's a motion to approve.
Move.
Motion and second to approve item twenty-nine, Mr. Munoz?
Yes, I had, uh, it, it, it remains the, uh, our contribution remains the same, I noticed, uh, it's been the same for several years. My question is, I noticed that, uh, BISD has a rep on the, uh, on the Community Health Center Advisory Board. I'd like to know who that is and, and who appoints him, or her.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, members of the board. I really don't know the answer. Ms. Castillo, do you know the answers to who? I know that Ms. Castillo works very closely with the community health.
We have invited all of you, uh, to our meetings, our, uh, community advisory board meetings. And, uh, I think so, Mr. Sokowski went once. I'm Alex Flores, I'm the director for campus care centers. But, uh, thus far, no one else has come, but all of you are welcome to be on it.
The question was, who, uh, who selects?
The, the, the agreement that we have, since we're a major contributor, is we have one appointee to your board of, of advisors, your advisory board, and I'd like to know who it is and-
When? When we appointed the last one?
Well-
I don't remember.
Who is it and, and who, who appointed him?
So, who, who is our, our liaison?
If, if you don't mind, I'll just go ahead and appoint Ms. Castillo right now, because she's the one that works real closely with him, anyway.
Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Lehman, the board, I am the liaison.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Munoz got an answer.
Is that a good answer?
It's a great answer.
Very good answer.
You don't need a lifeline, right? All right. Okay, good answer. Uh, Mr. Munoz? That's it?
Yep, good answer.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Galván?
I had a question, uh, on this, um, the health services for families and children. Is, uh, is the district looking into possibly, uh, telecommunication with the doctor? And I know there's a way of, of having the doctor, uh, and patient, like a student goes in and can barely talk to the doctor.
I know what you're speaking of, and if we had, uh, the need for it, we have, we're affiliated with the Brownsville Community Health Center for pediatric primary care, you realize that. So, we have a physician there every week, plus the, uh, middle, uh, level providers there every single day. If we were able to pay for that type of telecommunication, we would certainly look into that, uh, don't you think, Alex?
Well, I think the, probably for specialty care, we are, our clinic is equipped to do that, and we have been working with UTMB and Galveston for some specialty care, but thus far, that need hasn't been there, because we usually send the patient there, and they can get better care that way than tele-, telemedicine, it's called.
Right. And, and can our students receive, uh, medication?
Yes. They are, uh, uh, they go through our pharmacy and they pay a fee of six, twelve, or eighteen dollars, depending on the prescription. on the prescription. Kidding. We have a whole formulary of medications.
Mr. Munoz?
Yes, a question might relate, uh, I'm curious, do they have an active, uh, grant rider?
Yes, we do. We are, we have just submitted our big grant to the federal government, to the tune of about $4 million for, uh, our entire clinic, which includes campus care centers. We have five sites, the main site, two campus care centers, New Horizon Medical, and Cameron Park. So, uh, this is a competitive year for us. The grant went out, is going out, rather, in a couple of weeks. Normally, we are funded every year to the tune of about $4.5 million, but that's for 20, we have a patient load of about 20,000 in Brownsville, and that's for engine care.
So if, if we do well, then, then perhaps we won't need, uh, the, the 100 grand that we kick in every year then?
Uh, no, Mr. Munoz, they need the money.
Well, I, I know they need the money and, and they could use more money, and that's why I asked the question, if we're actively looking for grants, because there's a lot of money out there. But once, once we establish, uh, an input, uh, that, that, that 100, I don't want to see that as a baseline to grow. We started at, at nothing. We started at furnishing the facilities and the, uh, utilities and, and maintenance and things like that, and then we went up to, I think, 50,000, now we're up to 100,000. So if, if, when, 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 and the advisory board, uh, participates in, in doing the budgetary process, I, I don't think that it should be a given that, that there's 100,000 there forever. That, we, we, we kicked it up to 100,000 because there were problems, it looked like you were going to have a shortfall.
Yes, and of course, uh, it started as, for eventually be self-sufficient, and many years ago, it was a grant, originally it's a grant, and then now it's costing $100,000, which is fine, except, you see, we need to be active seeking other grants as we used to do in the past. If you look up the Department of Education, Department, all these health departments, you'll see there's lots of money, especially if you're tied with diabetes and other, uh, kind of diseases that are very prevalent in this area, there's grants for it, and I'm talking about millions of dollars. All we need to do is go into internet, get the grant application, and start filling out. I think we, if you're reactive and aggressive, you can find the money, especially in the health area, especially in this area. There's a lot of diabetes and I don't know what else in here they talk about, and I'm pretty sure you're aware of this, and the point is, is just get on with it and, and get a grant, whether we write it or the, the clinic or where it is, but the money's out there, and I'm talking about millions of dollars. I'm telling you, because I do the research myself.
We, uh, normally, if you are applying for new funds, you have to establish a new access point, meaning you have to start a new clinic. So for the two existing centers, we cannot apply for, um, new, new funding. We can apply for continuing, continuing, continuing funding, and those are very hard to come by. There is funding that the, that the school board, that the, that the school district can apply for through the state. Uh, right now, that funding that the state provides is about 120,000 a year, uh, so I'd be happy to work with you guys on, on that funding. It has to be submitted by you, by the district, though.
But there are lots of grants where they can build partnerships, they can link, they're seeking grants with other kinds of links, other partnerships in your grant writing.
We will continue to explore all the granting, uh, grants opportunities out there.
And, and this is why I wanted to know who, who our representative on, on the board is, and we expect those sort of, uh, activities, and, and, and what Mr. Aguilar says is, you know, we, we need our money for, for education and, and, but we realize that health is connected to education. But, uh, as he says, with, 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 with our economic status here as one of the poorest counties in the entire United States, and epidemic, uh, diabetes and juvenile diabetes, there, there's got to be a lot of money out there. And as you say, if, if, if we can help you get, get grants, we'll be very happy to do so. So we need to work with you, we need to do these things, and we would expect our representative to, to relay that and, and, and get it to the proper, uh, department here, so.
Dr. Scoville?
We need to talk about this and, and keep it moving forward.
Just very briefly, yes, there's a lot of money out there, but there's even more people that want it, it's extremely competitive, you don't just write a grant and get it. If there's anything that we can do as a board, please let us know.
Yes, thank you. Uh, just to give you an idea of, 80% of our patients that we serve at, at campus care centers are uninsured. So, you know, you're looking at kids that don't get seen anywhere else, even private providers won't see them. So this is.
And precisely, Mr. Dr. Scoville, we said, whatever the school district can help you to write those grants means that we're willing to help, uh, because we got grant riders, don't we?
Yes, sir. I think they got the point.
And she's getting how much?
I think we all understand each other.
I think we're, I think we know where we are, so let's get that grant money out there. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and move on and, uh, ask for a, uh, show of hands. So there's a motion and a second to approve item 29, all those in favor signify by raising hands saying aye. Aye. Aye, all those against, none, so motion carries, unanimous, thank you. Item 30, consideration, discussion, and possible action to amend the existing contract with Energy Smart Corporation for Services not in, not included in the existing contract. Discussion, but I'll start with, uh, I guess this is an item put by administration, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, members of the board. As you well know, we have contracted with, uh, Energy Smart, which is Mr. Bob Driggers, to go ahead and do an audit on all our campuses, and, uh, I might say he's doing a real good job and has already provided a lot of input, and been able to, to, to provide some suggestions for cost savings that has really helped us out. However, uh, in the past, administration has asked Mr. Driggers to go ahead and represent the district in negotiations with the other, such as the PUB, or with the Magic Valley, or with, uh, CPNL, or whoever, and that is not within the scope of his work. Uh, so he came up to me and said, what are we going to do about that? And I said, well, I understand that you were given a directive in the past to do that. I can't give you that directive unless we have the authority to, to go ahead and give you that directive as an amendment to the contract. So he wrote me the letter, and, uh, you'll find it on page 161, concerning that what his rate would be, would be $100 an hour plus actual expenses to come down and represent the district whenever it's needed to be represented, uh, in, in cases that do not require the audits of the campus, but it's really outside his, his duties of work. Uh, I have no problems with that because he does a good job with us, he knows, he's intelligent in those areas, he worked with maintenance very well, and Mr. Artigas is, is state to, to, to make sure that, that he has, if there's any questions of how Mr. Driggers is helping out the maintenance department, he can, he can answer. So I have no problems with this. If we're going to ask somebody to help us out, the least we can do is pay him for it. He, he does know his business in that area. Uh, I don't think we have that kind of expertise in our own staff on those particular areas, so it's something for you all to consider, and if so, we'll be good, we'll be able to ask him for assistance in the proper way.
I'm just going to ask, uh, on, on, on the fee, just to be more defined, what, what is actual documented expenses? What would be an example?
Actual documented expenses would be, we ask him to come down and, uh, he's, uh, to, he has to fly, maybe his tickets, his, uh, his meals, whatever it is that he actually can document, uh, that's related directly to the expense we asked him to come and help us out with.
I'll open it to the floor, any comments, Mr. Powers?
Thank you, President Lehman. Uh, what, what's the budget to the amount of monies we're going to spend? What did we budget last year? What were we spending, what we're going to budget now? Because I know he reviewed some of the schools, how many schools do we have left?
He, he's going to review all the schools, I don't like, know exactly how many schools he's got left, but I think it's 3,200 per school. Was it 3,200, Mr. Artigas, or 3,250? 3,250 per, per campus, and he's about, what, 50% finished? Can we, please, uh, come to the mic, please, Mr. Artigas?
What?
Thank you, Mr. Artigas, I, I know it's a long ways from back there.
I thought I was going to get, I get away with it.
You want to start all over again? Identify yourself.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Driggers was given a, a contract for one year. It began July, I think July the 15th, and expired June at the end of the, of the budget year. I think it expired June the 30th. So as of now, we don't have a contract with Mr. Driggers. However, the past administration would call him up and would, I asked him to come down and, and would, of course, to negotiate with PUB, like Mr. Gonzalez said, CPNL, the Magic Valley, and he would come down, and there is some negotiation right now. Right now, you can say that we're at the negotiation state. He's pretty close to completing all the audits, but again, it's not just a matter of paying for an audit and leaving it there and, and putting it in a file. I guess we need to take advantage of what's in the audit, and the most important part is yet to come, the negotiation. Mr. Driggers is, uh, an expert at what he does, and, uh, up to now, he's been able to negotiate with, uh, PUB. He's done away with maintenance, uh, agreements, that we were paying, I think, about 10,000 a month on these agreements, those are gone. He's done away with ratcheting, he's done away with, uh, or he's, uh, attempting to negotiate the primary metering of about 13, 14 schools that we have. By doing so, you'll see a reduction of 10 to 12,000, uh, dollars on the monthly bills on these campuses. He has been able to, and, and the, the biggie is the, uh, the contract that he was able to negotiate with Reliant Energy. Uh, last year, we were able to, uh, move over from PUB, CPNL, like Magic Valley, to Reliant Energy at a savings of a, a pretty, uh, close to $5 million in five years. So his salary has been paid already, but there's more to come. Right now, he's working on, uh, on a, um, nego, a, uh, in agreement with PUB whereby he might be able to get us a special rate. So a decision has to be made whether we continue working with him, or we drop it and lose all the, the monies that we are, are bound to gain by, by continuing working with him. I asked Mr. Driggers, uh, late this afternoon as to more or less what he, he foresees as, uh, completing most of the agreements with PUB, and, uh, he, he says that about, uh, I think it will cost us about another $5,000 to more or less complete those agreements and reap the benefits of the audits, and hopefully, he's hoping that by late December of this year, he should be complete with, with the audits also.
Mr. President? Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Artigas, that was a good explanation, it'd been nice to have the backup, but, uh, I, I was with Pat Lehman, and I know Mr. Drigger does excellent, excellent work, and, uh, you're right, that we need him. So I just want to know how many audits we had left, the 3,250, and then the $100 an hour plus expenses, is a good price to do, to let him do the hard, the hard-nosing with the, with the utilities.
All right, I, I might want to add, just for you to read the letter and, and, and when you make your motion, that's up to you for consideration, and you might even ask legal counsel on it. Uh, he wants retroactive back to July 10th when he started, when he was authorized, or asked by, by administration to do that.
And I do have those figures, Mr. Gonzalez, if you'd like for me to share with you.
And, and we, and we don't know, thank you, Mr. Artigas, but, uh, first, we need to clear up, uh, from legal counsel if we can do anything retroactive.
Uh, first of all, Mr. Gonzalez, if, and I was not briefed on this particular topic at all, so I'm kind of shooting from the hip right now, but if I heard Mr. Artigas correctly, we may not even have him under contract right now.
No, we do have him under contract under per school, that's.
The contract that we have, it, it's a very simple contract. He was simply contracted to go out and audit the campuses at 3,250 per campus.
No ending, no beginning, no ending.
For the 3,250 per campus, he provides us with a binder and all the recommendations that go with it. Now excluded from that, but those two recommendations are the negotiations that he will have to go through with the, uh, the energy suppliers.
I understand that, but I heard you mention a term that.
Yeah, that the contract was no longer, but I think we extended, we extended his term also.
Yes. The contract expired June the 30th for the audits. However, because he wasn't able to complete the audits, the term was extended, but again, the monies have already been encumbered. You all gave us some monies last year to pay for those audits.
Just taking longer to do the work.
Yes, those monies have been encumbered, uh, we're not asking for new monies for the audits. It's simply that we plan to use the gentleman to, uh, continue, uh, working with us, and we need to come up with an amount, and it needs to be approved by the board, because I, I feel very uncomfortable calling Mr. Driggers and, uh, under the direction of the board and Mr. Gonzalez, at times, you all will say, well, we have a bid here that has to do with energy management or, or HVAC, have you all consulted with Mr. Driggers? It's very difficult for me to get him on the, get him on the phone and, and ask him for consultation or recommendations, and not being able to say, well, you know what, you can charge us and we, you're going to get paid for it.
Given the fact, uh, Mr. President, uh, that he is under contract right now, and this, this work was apparently authorized by the previous administration, I don't, I wouldn't see any problem with it as far as the retroactive is concerned. I would like to, uh, as far as that agreement that just went off my screen, uh, like to work with him, because I know I worked on him, with him on his original contract quite a bit, uh, and it's really more issues of form as to the contract than, than, than substance, uh, but, uh, if we can get this into a, a slightly different form, I think it'll take care of Mr. Driggers, take care of Mr. Artigas' concerns, we get him paid up, and we get it down on paper and, uh, and get it done, if, if that's the wishes of the board. But i- it's just really more a question of form, and we can, we can go ahead and get it done.
Well, can we just say that to include all work that has previously been?
Sure.
Yeah, because, I mean, I'm pretty sure that he's already has a lot of legwork on it. Okay.
So long as there's not a budget issue.
So the motion, uh, what kind of motion do we need, Mr. Gonzalez?
It'd be a, a motion to go ahead and authorize administration to work with counsel in, uh, including these services by Mr. Driggers, part of his contract.
How much is it, roughly?
$100 an hour plus.
$100 an hour plus. Retroactive.
Hmm, what are you looking at?
It's very little, it's 1,100.
$1,100? $1,100.
$1,100 only.
You want to, you want to spend it, Mr. Powers, and save 5, $5 million?
Don't need it.
Okay, well, the motion's going to read, uh, to, uh, go ahead, and, uh, there's a motion to amend the existing contract with Energy Smart Corporation for Services not included in the existing contract, and what else do we need to interject?
I move.
Well, we're just approving to, to amend it? No specifics? Uh, no. Uh, as, as per the backup in here, which is, which includes the schedule, which is basically a fee schedule. Is there a motion?